It is five thirty. The Balconies Heights Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors meeting will commence. So take notice that a regular called meeting of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas, will be held on the twenty-second day of July, two thousand and twenty-four, at five thirty P. M. in the Justice Center located at thirty-three hundred Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas, to act upon any lawful subject which may become, which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following business. A call to order and recording of quorum, we have a quorum. Second, we need an approval of minutes for the meeting on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
There are second. Can you turn on your microphone, David?
David.
Mr. Sellers.
Mr. Sellers.
Can you turn on your microphone for the recording?
I second that.
Thank you. We have a-
I have a loud voice. I didn't-
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Passes unanimously. So third, we will go to citizens to be heard. Delia, are there any citizens to be heard?
No, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. So we'll move on to the business items. First, the board will review, discuss, and take appropriate action on an order number two thousand and twenty-four dash X X, approving district expenses through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Messick.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. We're meeting tonight or this afternoon to review the quarterly budget for the district. This product is for the current fiscal year. I know we've been meeting just about every month looking at next year's budget, but this one is concerning the current year budget, and we do this once a quarter. You have a copy of the line item budget for the district. It's the same one that's in your council packet tonight for regular council. You also have the trial balance for the quarter ending thirty, June, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. So overall, I'm pleased where the budget stands at this time of the year for your district. Now, the budget target for June would be seventy-five percent, which means ideally all your revenues and expenses would be at seventy-five percent. Of course, none of that's linear, so personnel expenses are at seventy percent of the budget. That's five percent under, so that's good. Overall expenses for the district at this point are sixty-seven percent, which is eight percent below the budget target. It's always good to be below with the expenses. Revenues are sixty percent of the budget, and that's fifteen percent below the target. However, of course, as you know, in the Crime Control District, it's sales taxes, and sales taxes are two months in arrears. So if you factor that in, you're actually at about seventy-six percent budget, and so that's pretty good. The balance sheet that you have shows that the fund is balanced. That's more for the auditor. The first thing she looks at when she comes in is to make sure all the funds are balanced, and so I show you that. This fund is balanced. Of course, all your funds are balanced every month. I trust you had a chance to review your numbers, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. Are there any questions?
I have a question. What is the dollar amount difference this year in the fiscal year, two thousand and three?
Yeah, and that's on your budget sheet, sir. You can see that. On the line item budget, I'll walk you through it. Yeah, no problem. So with the line item budget, you have your revenues, your fund balance at the top, and then your revenues. So right now, at this point, revenue-wise, we're at five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Last year, this time, we were at five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six twenty-one, so a little bit better this year than what we were last year, and that's because sales taxes are up roughly three percent this year, as we would hope. On the expense side, a little under what we had last year. And so, yeah, like I said, I'm happy with where it sits, so.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions? All right, so this is an action item, so do we have a motion regarding this, the district's expenses?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second. Thank you, Mr. Valverde. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, there are no other items. We will adjourn at five thirty-five P. M.
Please. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here. We are here for the regular city council meeting agenda. Notice is hereby given that the above-called meeting of the governing body of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P. M. In the Justice Center Council Chambers located at thirty-three hundred Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas, seven eight two oh one, to consider and act upon any lawful subject that may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. I will call to order and recording of a quorum. We do have a full quorum for the record. Okay? And we will do the invocation and pledges of allegiance to the U. S. and Texas flag. So let's go ahead and begin with that. So, Mr. Sellers, you'll go to the invocation, please. Go ahead and do the prayer if you like. Yes, you can. That's what we'll normally start with prayer, and then we'll go to the pledge of allegiance.
You don't cover your heads. Heavenly Father, we're gathered here today to form judgments, make decisions that will affect the lives of those committed to our charge. Please give us wisdom and understanding. Guide our decisions, may they be fair, just, and merciful. Amen.
And I have an additional prayer I'd like to add if I can. So I'd like to say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass us, and lead us not into temptation, deliver us from evil. For this is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you. So we will do now the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Fire the United States of America, together with the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and eternal.
Honor my- Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal. Thank you, everyone, for that. So we're going to move into the public comment period. At this time, persons who have submitted comments in writing prior to the meeting will have those comments read out loud and entered into the record. During the citizens to be heard section, no council discussion or any other action may take place except to place it on the future agenda so that it may be considered. So we have three individuals that have signed up to speak. And Mr. Eversole, I think you put number one that you want to talk about, and number five. Is that a correct? Okay, sorry. I forget, counselor, he wants to talk about it now or wait till he gets to the item on the agenda?
It's up to you, Mayor's Presiding Officer. In the past, we've allowed the citizens to come up during that specific item.
Okay, it's your preference, Mr. Eversole. I can go either way. Okay, that sounds good. Yes. Excuse me, just one second, Mr. Eversole. Yeah, I think when the item comes up, if you like. Yeah, okay. So then he wanted to discuss it during the time of the citizens. What I think our counselor was telling, he can do it now if he wants. We don't have to wait to get to the item at number or whatever it is. Are you okay with that? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so our counselor told us that it's okay if he wants to talk about it now. Okay, so we're good. We're good. Mr. Eversole, come on up. I'm sorry about that. Just a little confusion there.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm just going to read this. It shouldn't take more than a minute. The GTHQ is a globalized organization asking for permission to sell arms and distribute weapons across the United States and the globe. They want to fly in and train the following types of people here in Balconies Heights, training people to be bodyguards, security guards, assassins, human killing machines, armies, and possibly terrorist organizations. Who recommends this monster to our city council? Who funded such an organization? Foreign governments, CIA, FBI, United Nations, terrorist organizations, political organizations, or all of the above? Money has no face and is welcomed by everyone. Do not be deceived. I suggest no, definitely no, and blank, 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 no. No further action be taken until the P. N. Z. can make better recommendations to the council. My prayer and concern for speaking out, I do not want my children, grandchildren, and their grandchildren to be around war machines like the GTHQ, where people are coming in from all over the globe. Fruit of GTHQ tree, since I don't know much about them. They have established positions of advantage in the following states. I learned this at the Planning and Zoning Commission, California, New York, Washington, D. C., Michigan, and Atlanta. These states are currently a mess, and our country and businesses and citizens are flocking to Texas as a result. The company sounds so tame and harmless, wholesale trade. We collect no sales tax, no revenue. Lodging and dormitory, training to kill, that is what our government's job was at one point in time. But today, the evil task is done by companies like this. This is a global arms distributor distribution center. This company is not welcome in Balconies Heights. In closing, I recommend no further action be taken on this agenda item. As a business owner and citizen of Balconies Heights, I see minimal benefit from having a company in Balconies Heights. We do not know enough about them to make a decision. Hold off on this until we know more about them. I have listed several serious concerns that I consider deal breakers and are non-negotiable for my ethics and Christian values. Hold off until the council and the P. N. Z. answers these questions. I speak out today as a voice for the citizens and the businesses in Balconies Heights. Thank you for listening to my perspective and concerns.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak at citizens to be heard? We'll move forward to the next item. Thank you very much for your comments. So we will go down to the presentation, introduction of new police officers. Chief Janaara.
Counselor. We're going to start off. We have three officers. Try to get this taken care of. We have families here present today with us. So we're going to start off with Sharon Rodriguez. Sharon Rodriguez wants to come on up. One of our new officers here that we acquired. We have our officers do a little bio so we can introduce them to council, to our residents, and of course, to our staff that may not be familiar with our officers. So we have them submit a little bio. We present them to y'all, and we just get familiar, and we want to welcome them to our city. So Officer Rodriguez began her career in two thousand and twelve as a correction officer. Shortly after, in two thousand and thirteen, she enrolled in the Texas Peace Officer Academy at San Antonio College. Upon completion of her training, she began working for the Bear County Sheriff's Office in two thousand and sixteen. After working with the sheriff's office, she went to work for Hollywood Park Police. Her next step in her career led her to taking, taking a break from law enforcement to pursue her, pursue her political ambitions. When returning to law enforcement, Officer Rodriguez was employed by Our Lady of the Lake University for a short time before she applied with the Balcony Heights Police Department. She is nearing the end of receiving her criminal justice degree and looks forward to receiving her bachelor's degree in business administration. She is the mother to three extraordinary children and the wife to a wonderful husband, who has been a sheriff's deputy for many years. Mayor, council, staff, residents of Balcony Heights, please join me in welcoming Officer Rodriguez into our department.
Don't let the tininess fool you guys, though, okay? I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work here at Balcony Heights. Something that I did leave out of my bio is I actually, many years ago, lived where the Boston Woods was. Used to be the Cumberland Apartments and the Villa Madrid Apartments. I also used to live at the Dakota Apartments many, many years ago. All that before the age of seven, so it's kind of fun to be back where I started my life. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here, chief. You've been really, really great since I've met you, and I'm really happy to join such a great team and work under great leadership. LT, thank you so much for the process of coming on. You guys have been great, answered all my questions to the fullest, and, and the sergeants, you know, everybody that I've been working with, Chris, Sergeant Manchaca, have been really, really great. I love the team that I'm working with, and that's very, very important, working in the industry that we're in, and thank you, guys.
Sharon, you want to just do your swearing in? Just get that taken care of? We'll get that out of the way, and then I can't get my wallet on, or else I would have paid you for that little insert here in front of my, my bosses here. It's a joke. It's a little joke, right? So do you have someone that's going to pin you? Oh, this gentleman over here. Awesome, awesome. So you have the badge, so if you want to look at me and then just raise your right hand and just repeat after me, I got to get my glasses. So I'm going to record. You got it? You want to come up here, Mom? You can record, get a better, better angle. Because we have it all recorded too, so we can. Okay, ready? Here we go. So right hand. So I, Sharon Rodriguez-
I, Sharon Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of a full-time-
The duties of the office of a full-time-
Peace officer of the state of Texas-
Peace officer of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my abilities-
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve-
Preserve.
Protect-
Protect.
And defend the Constitution-
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
Of this state-
Of this state.
And the city of Balcony Heights, Texas-
And the city of Balcony Heights, Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And there you go, buddy.
There we go. All right.
There you go.
Good practice.
Mayor, council, next officer we'd like to call up is going to be Officer Hunter Signs. Mr. Signs, Officer Signs wrote a novel, so we had to kind of condense this down, so. But he, he's an open book, so we'll start off with this. Officer Signs is currently a patrol officer with the Balcony Heights Police Department since May of this year. He holds an intermediate, intermediate police officer license with over one thousand, seven hundred and fifty hours of continuing education. He realized he wanted to be a law enforcement officer after an event at his school occurred when he was six years old. He remembers it like it was yesterday. All of his classmates were in the cafeteria, and all of the area law enforcement officers, to include police, deputies, and troopers, showed up. His teacher at the time gave everyone a star badge where they could have the officer sign. He remembers running around as if it was in the Lego section of Walmart and trying to get as many signatures as he could. He apologizes for that sounding cliche, but that, that he knew when he, he, that, that's the time that he knew he wanted to be a police officer. To this day, he still has that same star. Have it above your bed, right?
I do.
Yes, sir. Keeps that in his bed, right above his bed, with all the signatures from those officers that day that came to visit. He began his journey in law enforcement in July of two thousand and fourteen at the age of twenty-two years old and graduated in December of two thousand and fourteen with his peace officer license. He began his full-time career with the city of Florisville in two thousand and fifteen, where he started as a patrol officer and worked his way up to a field training officer, intoxic- intoxicilizer operator, and a detective. He quickly found that he loved this career with a passion and couldn't see doing anything else. In February of two thousand and twenty-two, he became part of the Guadalupe County Sheriff's Office. Their, their team, where he was commissioned, he loved the profession and continued to grow. While working off-duty, he met Lieutenant Kenneth Ortiz from our CID department, who spoke highly of Balcony Heights Police, our department, and our city. After going through the hiring process with our city, he was selected for his position. Though his time has been brief with our department, he has come to enjoy every bit of it. The best thing which has come to light with our department is the small department vibes, which he fills with all the big-city action. The department is that of a tight-knit family, but with the respect of modern policing. He sees himself continuing his career with our agency and moving through the ranks. He has nothing but the utmost respect for his fellow patrol officers and supervisors, and will continue to do his best to serve the city and the citizens of Balcony Heights. Mayor, council, staff, residents of Balcony Heights, please join me in welcoming Officer Hunter Signs into our department.
One thing to write it all down, it's easier to read it verbatim, and then actually stand here and look at everybody and be like, oh, what am I going to say? Pretty much what he, chief said, exactly how I feel. Love this agency. I love everything it has to offer. I love working with these people over here to my left, chief to the right, and all, and all the city council members before me, as well as the citizens in here as well. Definitely see myself moving through the ranks and progressing with this agency. When I definitely said that this is a small town, but with big-city action, I never knew what it was like to get in a foot chase at seven-thirty in the morning until I came here, and that became a reality, and I realized I need to lose weight, and that's going to be something next on the, on my agenda. If anybody has any questions, I'm definitely more than willing to answer anything.
Innocent. Anybody? Okay.
So it's just starting off, just a bio. I will come with the time soon.
We're doing our swearing, right?
Yep.
My going to pin you?
Oh, you're going to pin him. Okay.
So the one that gave me the job. This one? Oh, well, there you go. So let's get this here, so let's raise our right hand and just repeat after me. I, Hunter Signs-
I, Hunter Signs.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of a full-time peace officer-
The duties of the office of a full-time police officer.
Of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability-
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve-
Preserve.
Protect-
Protect.
And defend the Constitution-
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
Of this state-
Of this state.
And the city of Balcony Heights-
And the city of Balcony Heights.
Texas.
Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I might need help from- I'll let him. Man, I'm going to have to go in here.
Yeah, you guys are going to have to go in there.
Because I'm going to, I'm going to poke you. We didn't practice.
We didn't practice.
We didn't practice. We should have.
Record. Once again, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, residents. Last one that we have, not last, but not- Matthew Redd. And this one has an interesting twist, so Officer Redd, come on up. In his bio, Officer Redd is not- He's not nude at Balcony Heights, should I say? So he actually was employed with us in our dispatch facility in the early two thousands at that time where he was, and it'll be explained in his bio, but he was working in our dispatch facility. At that time, he was working nights, and you were going to school during the days. So working through his peace officer, the academy, and then he became a reserve with us. At that time, we were to capacity. We didn't have any positions available, so he went on, I believe, to Florisville. But let me get into this, and it'll explain more. So Officer Matt Redd attended ACOG Academy in August of two thousand and nine, where he graduated later that year, class Bravo, two thousand and nine. He has a total of fifteen years of police experience, and he currently holds an advanced peace officer license. Officer Redd is very familiar with Balcony Heights, as he was employed as a dispatcher for our city in the early two thousands, where he worked overnight and went to police, our police academy during the day. He began his law enforcement career for our city as a reserve police officer. During that time, he also became a father, where he had his first born. Officer Redd went on to the city of Florisville for a full-time position, where he worked for eight years, making the rank of corporal and detective. Officer Redd declined that promotion to detective, as he felt he had more to accomplish on patrol. A choice in his career that later led him in assisting with the captured and aggravated sexual assault suspect who forced his way into a home and kidnapped three children at gunpoint. In two thousand and thirteen, he received a letter from the Guadalupe County Sheriff's Department praising his efforts, stating, "If it wasn't for his efforts, the three children may have never been found." The suspect was later sentenced to fifty years in prison. Officer Redd also worked for the Via Transit Metropolitan Police Department, where in two thousand and twenty-one, he received a letter from Governor Abbott for a job well done for assisting a suicidal teenager on the highway, on Highway ninety from harm. As I have mentioned, a few Officer Redd's accolades in his career that he is proud of, the proudest moments of his life is being a father to his son and his daughter. He is also set to marry the most beautiful woman in the world later this year. His family is the greatest accomplishment, and he feels blessed having his soon-to-be-wife and two children. Officer Redd quoted, "I started my career in Balcony Heights, and I'm ready to end it here. I'm grateful for chief and hope to accomplish even more greater things. I'm a proud police officer and thankful to serve the citizens of Balcony Heights." Mayor, council, staff, residents in Balcony Heights, of Balcony Heights, will you please join me in welcoming Officer Matt Redd? Matthew Redd.
I'm glad to be home, and when I first started here, chief was actually my patrol sergeant. I was just a baby, so I'm grateful that he gave me an opportunity to finish my career here, and hopefully I got another fifteen years left in me, but, but I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
If you want, is your wife?
Yeah.
Come on up. Yeah. Ready? You want to just do your swearing in first?
Sorry.
Let's make it official, right? Just raise your right hand, and then just repeat after me.
That's kind of important.
I, Matthew Redd-
I, Matthew Redd.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office-
The duties of the office.
Of a full-time peace officer-
Of a full-time peace officer.
Of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability-
And I will, to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Preserve.
Protect-
Protect.
And defend the Constitution-
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
Of this state-
Of this state.
And the city of Balcony Heights-
And the city of Balcony Sites.
Texas.
Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, brother. Thank you, brother. Appreciate you. Mayor, council, and residents of Balcony Heights, staff already knows this, but what a phenomenal three, group of individuals. I'm sure our field training officers were very pleased when they came on to the department. Normally, it takes anywhere between three to four months on an average to train an officer, being that they were very well experienced. They didn't even get anywhere near that, so they, they're on the field. I'm sure y'all are familiar with their faces and, you know, accompl- accomplishing our policies and procedures. They're, they're well above, you know, up to speed, so a good asset for our department and good things to look forward to from them. So thank you. Appreciate.
I'd just like to add a couple of words to that and welcome all three of you. Officer Sharon Rodriguez, Officer Hunter Signs, and Officer Matt Reed. I'd like to express our sincere gratitude for serving our community and our city. We ask that you watch yourself while you're out there, be careful, and go home to your family safe. We ask that you watch yourself while you're out there, be careful and go home to your family safe. We will always have you in our prayers and we will always be looking out for you. So thank you very much for everything on behalf of the city. Yes, Councilman Burden?
Question for Chief. Are we fully, are we fully staffed now?
No, sir. Not as of yet. We're still open to one position. So we're at seventeen right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so let's move on down to the next item on the agenda. We have the presentation still, Payroll Week proclamation. This is gonna be something I need to present. And this will be in reference to the Payroll Week proclamation that I was contacted by Ms. Denise Kelly. I think Ms. Kelly is here. Ms. Kelly, would you like to say a few words prior to the proclamation?
My name is Denise Kelly and I'm with the Alamo chapter for the payroll association. And I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support because everybody loves the paycheck and stuff. So we do train a lot of people that are in the payroll profession and then we also go and speak to different high school students and get them to understand how their first check's gonna look and not be surprised that taxes are being taken out, things like that. So it's really fun and interesting doing all of that. So thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you for contacting me. When I saw what it was about, I thought it was something that we could support and continue if we've done it in the past.
Yes.
With further ado, let me walk up and give you the proclamation. So would you like me to read it here? What is traditionally in front of the podium or? All right.
It's very long. You really don't have to read it all.
Denise, so whereas the payroll organization, it's more than twenty thousand members, it's launched nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to nearly one hundred and fifty million people working in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting work earnings and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in the city of Alphons Heights play a key role in maintaining the economic health of the city of Alphons Heights, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement and carrying out tax withholding, reporting and depositing. And where else, whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than two point four trillion dollars annually, complying with the merit of federal and state wage and takes the tax law. And whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role in ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-constodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. And whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state officials to discuss both improving compliance with governmental procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. And whereas the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week. I hereby give additional support to the efforts of the people who work in the city of Alphons Heights Texas and of the payroll profession by proclaiming the first full week of September Payroll Week for this city of Alphons Heights. Now therefore, I, Johnny Adrodega Junior, do hereby recognize September one through the seventh, that's in two thousand twenty-four, as a National Payroll Week. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand this twenty-second day of July, two thousand twenty-four. Mayor Johnny Adrodega, City of Alphons Heights, blessed by Ms. Delia Sancho. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
The John Q. Alrighty.
Thank you.
All done. Congratulations. Moving on down the line of the agenda, we will now start with the consent agenda items. And approval of minutes for special workshop meeting of June ten, two thousand twenty-four, and approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and the finance report for the month of June, two thousand twenty-four. So we have any discussion on that or do we want to open it up for a vote and then discussion? Would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve in their entirety.
Second, okay, motion by Councilman Signs and second by Councilman Lysia. Do we have any discussion on the item? It's open to discussion now. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a name?
I said aye.
Yeah, okay. So all, everyone is five to one. I mean, excuse me, five oh. Motion carries and passes. Yes.
Can we do roll count votes so that we can all?
Absolutely. Councilman Bud Redding?
Aye.
Aye, okay. No? Councilman Signs?
Aye.
Councilman Lysia?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers?
Aye.
Councilman Burden?
Aye.
Five oh, motion carries. Okay. Now we'll move into the business items. First item on the business items, number one. The council will hold a public hearing to receive public comments on a special use permit, SUP, request submitted by applicant and property owner GTHQ LLC for the property located at sixty-nine zero one West Interstate ten. So we had two individuals, let's see, that wanted to speak on number five. I mean, excuse me, on number one, which Mr. Eversol has already spoken. You don't need to speak again, correct? And we have Mr. Lamar Gillian, he wanted to speak.
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe you need to open the comment period with a timestamp.
Okay, so the timestamp will be then. Thank you for the correction. What's that? Six thirty-two I've got on the phone. Six thirty-two P M. We'll open up the, for discussion on the comment. Thank you, Councilman Signs.
Lamar, Lamar Gillian, three, two, four, Glenarm, Balcony Heights, Texas. I'd like to say that I totally support this organization that's coming into our city. I've heard some very disturbing comments over the last two weeks at different meetings. This is not a subversive organization. It's not driven by any particular political party. These are good people trying to provide wonderful training for our law enforcement community nationwide, statewide, countywide, citywide. So I welcome these people to our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillian. Okay. So let's go ahead and move on. We have another individual that signed up. Suzie DeLeon, I mean, excuse me, Suzanne DeLeon.
Thank you, council. I appreciate this opportunity. This message is for the council, our residents, staff, Mr. Stark and your team. Thank you for being here tonight. I believe that the planning and zoning members who voted last week against allowing GTHQ LLC to receive the special use permit do not understand what this business is and what it will be for our community. Several years ago, city staff and I met with the company's leadership team and we were extremely happy that they wanted to come into our city and buy an old hotel that had been closed for some time and just brought blight to our community. They let us know their intentions of being a training facility for security personnel and that training will also be made available to non-employees, including officers from city, state and federal law enforcement agencies. We were assured and we trusted that the building would be secure twenty-four seven. In the application for the SUP, they said, quote, "Secure storage of firearms is a small but important aspect of our business, which we're very proud to be bringing to Balcony Heights, Texas. We will be deploying the best-in-class security and fire protection system as well as twenty-four-hour security guards at this new facility," end quote. The SUP they requested is to provide temporary, not permanent, lodging in dormitories during training academics to provide respite and for trainees to have a place to shower after a long day of training. The application submitted also said they would never have retail space and their request is designated as wholesale with no outdoor sales or display. Since the building was previously a hotel, it would be very easy for them to upgrade several rooms for these dormitories. Otherwise, they would have to have the added expense of having to host trainees in a local hotel or have the trainees cover their own costs for hotel rooms. Today, council, you have the opportunity to rectify this matter by voting yes to GTHQ's special use permit. Chief Jahanara has no issues with GTHQ being in our city and staff is recommending approval. We say we're about economic development, but the planning and zoning's decision to say no does not show this council and the community that they are about improving our city with new development. And keep in mind that they have already put in around eight million dollars into the building for phase one and phase two will begin soon, I'm told. This company will bring needed property taxes into our city and also sales tax from all the staff and the trainees when they shop and have meals in our city. If this council has questions regarding the storage, the selling issuance of handguns, which is part of a federal license, I ask that you direct your questions to the company leaders today. Keep in mind that the city's inspectors will also be doing their necessary and their mandatory inspections to ensure that everything is done correctly and within code. Finally, when someone decides they want to run for elected office, they are not running as a D, R and R. They are nonpartisan. I believe that every elected official and those residents who are appointed by council to planning and zoning, Board of Adjustments and Economic Development Corporation, should remember that they are in that position to make the right decision for the betterment of the community. Elected officials and those who are appointed should not, in any circumstance, let their personal preferences regarding their personal beliefs, their religious beliefs or their political beliefs interfere with positive decisions that will benefit the city, its residents and the city's reputation as well. Period. Thank you for this time. I hope that you will give this attention and consideration and allow them to have their special use permit. Thank you very much.
Clapping and everything, just so we can give everybody their due opportunity, equal opportunity, please. So we don't give the impression that we're favored one or the other. Okay, so any other discussion on this? Anybody else in the council would like to?
I know. This is for the public hearing.
Yeah, excuse me, for the public to comment. Any other public? We didn't have anybody else on the, other than Lamar and Mayor.
Do we have a representative from the company that would like to speak?
That would be on the next item.
On the next item? Okay, sir.
Thank you. This is for the public to provide their comment.
Okay, good deal. Okay, so then we will go ahead and close this item out. Is that correct?
At what? You have to announce the time.
Yes, of course. I was just gonna do that right now. The time is six thirty-nine P M. If there's no other comment, we will close the comment for the public session of comment. And we will now resume into the order of the business of the agenda. So we will move into now number two. The council will consider the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, take action on the SUP request submitted by applicant and property owner GTHQ LLC for the property located at sixty-nine zero one West Interstate ten to use as a wholesale trade with no outdoor sales or display and lodging dormitory. Mr. Lotte?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we just have a brief presentation, the presentation that we did to the planning and zoning, requesting the special use permits for the dormitory and the wholesale trade. Next slide. This basically just gives you a description of the property. As you can see, it's the old Howard Johnson, as people have mentioned. The current zoning for this property is O one low-rise office. One thing for people to remember is that no zoning is being changed on any property. This is strictly a request for a special use permit. Next slide. Just to give you a background of the current zoning in the area. The development. Yeah, zoning request, as has been mentioned, is for lodging dormitory and the purpose again for the students there in the wholesale trade. As again, I reiterate again that it is O one zoning that is not changing. That has been the zoning of the property. The primary use is going to be school for business or commercial trade. This is permitted. Okay, so please understand that this use of training, security training is permitted by O one. So there's no question about that. There's no issue being brought to you today about that. So we just want to make sure. And they also have the ability to office there and that is also permitted by O one zoning. So again, that is not in discussion here. Next slide. As we mentioned, again, the SUP for the lodging is for dormitory. The students, when they're going through their training, they'll be allowed to go ahead and stay there overnight. The SUP, which is the one for wholesale trade, is simply because the ATF, the principals, they own a firearms federal firearms. And so the ATF requires that the designation for their, where they're gonna locate their weapons and sell them have to has a trade. And so wholesale trade is what they're gonna be doing. Again, these are for their students or their employees who go through the training as well. Again, as was mentioned, no weapons will be sold to the public. They will be stored on site. And once again, there will not be discharge on site. There will be no firing range located at this location. To give you the approximate footage of where the residents are, the apartments are seven hundred feet and seventy feet or more. And the single-family residents are by five hundred and fifty feet or greater. And that's Henish, that's the closest houses that are there. Obviously, the houses for Burl are even further away. Next slide. Again, we strongly recommend approval for this SUP at sixty-nine oh one on West Interstate ten for the lodging and for the wholesale trade. The one thing to, we also forgot to mention is that the students that are normally going through here are former veterans and they're utilizing their GI Bill to go through this training. So again, this gives the opportunity for those of us who are veterans like myself to integrate into the civilian world. This allows them an opportunity to go on and get a successful career in the civilian world. So at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to the representative, Joe Tim, who's the president of Yavin DeBecker and Associates, who will say a few words.
I have a question before you sit down. Can you define sales or display with emphasis on display?
Right, so our ordinances for retail and wholesale most common is everybody puts it in a building. And so some people actually can request to have a trade where they put it outside their building and display their wares to sell. So this, this doesn't allow anything other than in their building. They can't show it anywhere else. Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other question?
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Council, fortunate to be here tonight. Thank you. My name is.
My name is Joe Tim. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I live in San Antonio with my family and wife. My wife was born and raised here. Her family settled here in the 1900s. My mother-in-law with Miss Fiesta. My father-in-law served in the Army for 32 years. GDBA, our military training. We are, sorry, not military training. We are a veteran-driven organization. Over 69% of our employees are veterans. Back two of them are here tonight are also fellow Texans, fellow veterans and employees, Rodney and Eric. We hire veterans when they get out of the military, and we offer them a scholarship to come to our training academy. At that academy, they have an opportunity for employment with our company or to receive world-class training and take that training and apply to a professional security organization or a federal or state law enforcement organization. We also have our Gavin DeBecker Institute, which is accredited with the Veterans Affairs. Our employees that are veterans can use their GI Bill for additional benefits for schooling and pay, a significant pay bump for being a veteran and working at GDBA. We've created 35 new jobs since we came to San Antonio. Many of our employees now lived or live in Balcony's Heights. These are office people. These are trainers. As someone said earlier, this will also be part of our headquarters. Catering. We have a lot of training for our people, for people out of town, every month, coming to this city, spending two weeks here every single month, traveling through your airport, coming in here, traveling through my airport. We want to team up with your local restaurants. We don't have a kitchen there. We need food to feed all these hungry people. You've all received a packet, I believe, already with letters from prominent Texans supporting GDBA. I'm excited about the remodel. It's finally finished. It's been a four-year project. We're excited to get open, get people to San Antonio, and start contributing to the commerce and tourism here. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other questions for Mr.?
Tim.
Mr. Tim. I was gonna look at that. Any other questions?
Is there gonna be outdoor training, like cars, lights?
No, we do all that at a different facility. We have a nice green area where the open part of the hotel motel was at before that, and there'll be some picnic area out there and probably, you know, just some equipment for doing pull-ups, but no, there will be. We've considered the no noise and no other issues.
Your armory, what does that consist of?
Yeah.
If you could say without?
Sure. Yeah, it's a very small safe with just handguns. There's no property, not for that, not for the armory at all. That, those weapons are used if we. Sites. They don't go to individual. They go to sites like places in Florida, places in Michigan. Many of our employees come with CCW concealed weapons permits already. They already have a license. They don't need our weapon. They also have Leosa credentials, law enforcement officers. They are retired law enforcement, and they can carry in any state already. They don't need our firearm. Again, we're moving our hat in California for 10 years and putting it here now. That's it. We issue very few firearms.
You brought up something that I didn't even think of. Are these CCW holders gonna have their guns in their rooms?
No, no. None of our students have any weapons at all. There's no weapons allowed.
I thought you just said that they're CCW and they?
Oh, our employees' guns out too, but they stay there. And then we'll go. We teamed up with a, there's a range in Sagin and Dilly that we work with, and they have the weapons there, and they provide them. And they're all stored there.
I misunderstood.
Oh, no problem. No.
Mr. Herbert didn't sign up for speak, but if it's okay with the council, I will okay it and I'm fine with it if it's okay with the city council. Is it okay? Come on up to the podium, sir. You're welcome. You sure can. You're welcome.
I will to ask you.
Will you come up?
Like a laptop sitting on a locked car seat.
Yeah.
But can you explain a little bit for me, a little bit about the security for the storage of these weapons?
Yes, they'll be in a locked room that is sealed with keyless entry pad that few people have access to. Also, behind that door is a Sentry firearm safe.
Any external cameras on the building or?
Significant amount, sir. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Mr. Sellers, did you want to expand on that?
Okay. All right. He was gonna ask the same question as well.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I will say, since our security has been here since we started having construction security there, because people, you know, see the porta potty and it just attracts people to use it. We've called, you know, Balcony's PD numerous times, report trespassing, vandalism, and do our best to prevent crimes in the area. Right now, there's no plans to change that right now. We'll probably do some landscaping, but we, there already is somewhat of a fence around it between the adjacent property in the back. Yeah.
So basically, to clarify in my mind, obviously, I don't vote on this, but I just want to understand. This is a training facility that trains personal security personnel for specific requests from either, would it be just in the United States or outside the United States?
Our clients are in the United States.
United States, okay.
We are a national security provider.
Right, right. So it's personal body protection.
It is, and it's a lot of figuring out ways to just reduce risk. So if there's an at-risk person, and they have someone there, they're being trained to have early identification equipment to say, oh, looks like someone's breaking into this, trying to break into our house or cause someone harm. They want to prevent that. That's.
I missed that part. What now?
So they are trained through our academy to reduce risk, prevent attacks. Like there, I know someone mentioned earlier about being trained to do something other than good, but they're there to protect people, protect human life.
Right, and I just wanted to clear in my mind. So is it a private security firm?
Yes, sir.
Is what you are?
Yes, sir.
So you will be on commercial properties, things like that as well?
I can't go into, the confidential part of our business is clients and the secrecy there, so I wouldn't divulge that information because of NDAs.
Okay.
But yes, hypothetically, there are private individuals and corporations. Yes.
See, that's the part that I just didn't understand, not that I'm for or against.
Sure.
I just didn't understand it when I was trying to read some of the material that was provided as to, I couldn't get a clear understanding as to, you know, what your client, what your client list is, like your client-driven businesses. And I couldn't understand whether you were a private security firm or private protection security firm specifically.
Consulting firm. So you might call us and say somebody is mentally unwill, and they're threatening me online, and I need help, and we'll just advise on that. And that's just advisory work.
Because it just seemed very vague, and I couldn't get an understanding.
Sure.
I still don't. And.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to give you a tour of the facility and provide you with more material.
Okay.
Time.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask those questions. I didn't, I wasn't too clear on them. I sent this time. Yeah, I got it. Adelia sent it to me, but I still couldn't understand. So that's okay. I mean, like I said, it's just, I wanted to have that little bit of information. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Mr. Tim. Any other questions? Okay, council member.
I did get the literature this afternoon. You had something? No, I did get the literature, and I took the time and the effort to go over there and get a tour of the facility. I know there's been questions about security. It's a phenomenal setup they have with security cameras in every corner that you can think of. The, I did get a chance to briefly see the room that they're talking about, security. It's very secured. I, and that, I was, I had some of those same concerns, so I made an effort to go over there and see it. I'm very comfortable with what they're offering as far as the security process that they're gonna do to secure the weapons. And it's a phenomenal space that they've worked. They've done a magnificent job with it.
Welcome any council member by invite. Come over anytime. Give you a whole tour. In fact, even when the training's happening, you see that. That's really interesting and neat.
Okay, so if there's any other discussion, Mr. Burton? You go ahead.
What is your anticipated sales of firearms?
Zero sales. So we loan a weapon to a protector wherever they're going, and that stays at that site. There's no sale, so it's returned to us when they leave employment.
So then where does the sales tax?
Sales part comes in because it's an FFA. They don't have a special accommodation for what we need, but we won't be selling firearms to anybody.
Not even wholesale?
No. We're not selling anyone. These are for our employees, and we issue them their duty weapon. When they leave, it returns to us.
Because it says on here that y'all are collecting sales tax. Is that correct, Mr. Prowls?
No, there is no collection of sales tax, sir. I don't believe so.
Read it so we can hear it. Okay. So in the meantime, while he's looking at that, I have a question for staff. So one of our residents that registered speak up here in front mentioned that there's somewhat of an $8 million investment. What is our anticipated revenue stream from this particular project to the city? Do we have a projected amount on real estate property value being that there's an investment of that big of amount?
Well, it still hasn't been appraised, so it will come this coming year.
Do you have an idea?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a rough idea?
Maybe about $40,000, $50,000 a year, but that will be, but that will be total for, because the appraised value is a little bit different than the market value. So their investment is not, doesn't necessarily translate into appraised value. So, you know, don't hold me to that. Now, what I'm talking about is, you know, the, what may become the total cost once the project is complete for the facility, and that's total taxes, not just city taxes.
Okay. So our portion will be a portion of that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have to wait until the new appraised values come in from the county. Okay, got it. That gives me a general idea of what I was looking for. Councilman Burton, do you remember?
I found it. It's on the staff report, a requester, Albert Laura. Under financial impact, the city would receive sales tax revenue from the firearm sales and students eating at local establishments.
So to his point, there's not going to be any sales of firearms, and, but, but they will, whatever they purchase, if it's purchased locally, obviously, they'll pay sales tax. But the majority of the sales tax will be on any purchases for food that they have as part of their training efforts.
What is, what is considered to be wholesale trade?
In addition, there will be sales tax for people that pay for our training. Although we give out scholarships, people pay to come to our training, significant amount of money to do that training, and there'll be sales tax on that.
That along with that.
That's right, sir, along with additional training we do, specialized training.
And I think you heard, I heard you mention something about possibly upgrading the building even after it's?
Yeah, it's about a third done right now. It's significant space. So we'll, we have some plans drawn for Phase Two, but we want to get the rest of those rooms going and classrooms and office space, things like that.
Thank you.
More to come. Yep.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Okay, let's go ahead. We have a motion to call the question.
Second.
Second to that motion? Hey, Councilman Valverde is the second to that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? All ayes, is that correct? Let's take a roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Aye.
Councilman Sines?
Aye.
Councilman LaSaya?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers? Councilman Burton? Five oh, vote carries?
Motion, a motion to question?
Excuse me, motion carries to, for the question.
Correct. So with a motion to question, the discussion debate end, and now we need a motion on the item.
Okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the SUP for GTHQ LLC.
Okay, Councilman Sines has made a motion to approve the actual item on the agenda.
My second.
And we have a second from Councilman LaSaya.
Valverde.
Councilman Valverde, excuse me. Councilman Valverde, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so we've got. Councilman Valverde?
Aye.
Councilman Sines, aye.
Aye.
Councilman LaSaya?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers?
Councilman Burton.
Okay, five oh, motion carries to approve the SUP submitted by the applicant on property owner of GTHQ LLC for the property located at 6901 Western Interstate 10 to use as a wholesale tray with no outdoor sales or display in lodging dormitory. Welcome to our family. Now we can clap along. Welcome to our family.
Mayor, I do want to point out that.
Yes.
So when we're calling for a vote, it doesn't have to be a roll call, and.
I know, but I do it anyway because that's my preference to do so that I'm clear as to who voted.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. Appreciate it. It's just an added measure to help me. Okay, so we'll move on to item number three. City council will hold a public hearing for the Balcony's Heights Crime Control and Prevention District proposed annual operating budget for the period of October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. The time is 6:59 PM. And we will go ahead and hold this public hearing now. Okay, Mr. Messick, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Balcony's Heights Crime Control and Prevention District budget for FY25 was approved by you guys as board members last month. It now comes back to you as council members for approval this month. After approval, of course, this budget is incorporated into the city's FY25 budget.
Yes, let me just make a note that Councilman LaSaya has left the council chambers. Aye, excuse me, I keep saying.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're right next to me. Councilman Sines has just left the council chamber, so I just want to make a note. Go ahead.
So after the, after approval, the budget is incorporated into the city's regular budget for FY25, where it will be changed over the course of the summer. The two handouts that you have tonight for this public hearing, they haven't changed since April. They're the same ones that we've been looking at in the district meetings. You have a request for project funding in the district's FY25 proposed budget. The budget that is presented to you is balanced at $1,038,000 of revenue and expenses. On your revenue side, your largest sources of revenue, of course, is sales taxes, and we estimate just over $1 million in sales tax for the FY25 budget for the district. This is a 3% increase over what we expect to receive this year. I believe it's a good firm number that probably won't change that much over the summer. On your expense side, it's $881,000 for personnel expenses. That's up 6% over what was budgeted for this year. It covers the cost for eight police officers. I believe this number will decrease over the summer as we lock down healthcare. It's already decreasing because of the cold estimate as well, so I think that number will come down. Operating costs just over $157,000, a modest 3% increase over what we had last year. So total expenses, again, equal your total revenue, $1,038,000. And again, the budget is balanced. I trust you had a chance to review the numbers, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about them.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Messick? Anybody? Okay. Any, at any given time, the budget may be modified by council if they wish so down the line. For example, if there's an emergency budget crisis or something of that nature, and we have to take matters to discuss and consider possible action, then we could do it at any given time, correct?
Well, absolutely. You have approval authority, and you can call for an amendment.
Okay, Councilman Sines has returned to the council chamber. It's a note. Any other questions? Anybody else? Mr. Valverde, is that, you were just, okay. So if no other questions for the public hearing on the crime control and item number three, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:03 PM. And we will resume on number four. Consider an action to adopt a resolution approving the 2024-2025 Balcony's Heights Crime Control and Prevention District budget.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Councilman Sines has a motion to approve. Any second to that?
Second.
Councilman LaSaya, we got it right this time. The second to that motion. Now I'll call a vote for it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have a roll call, Mr. Valverde? Okay, good. Mr. Sines?
Aye.
And Mr. LaSaya?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers? Mr. Burton? Motion carries five oh. Item has been adopted. So we now come to the discussion and possible action to repeal the ordinance on requirements of banners. Councilman Sines has asked that we like to speak about that prior to the presentation by anyone? Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Well, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So my concern is the terminology in the agenda item, possible action to repeal the ordinance on requirements of banners. So to repeal would mean to remove entirely so that there would be no regulations that the city could enforce on businesses putting up signs of any kind. So I wanted to ask Mr. Ebersol if he could come up. I just want to ask you a couple of questions. You and I had breakfast about 10 days ago or so, and we discussed. You and I had breakfast about ten days ago or so, and we discussed, one of the items we discussed was your desire to update the requirements for signs for businesses. So, I just wanted to confirm your, your desire with this motion or for this agenda item. Do you want to amend the banners and signs?
I was gonna say, one of the things I wanted to do after we talked is like, I don't know if you got my email with the presentation?
I did, I replied to.
Okay, okay, that's what you did. I am, am I more interested in making a slight adjustment? I think I'm more believing in big, small changes make big differences.
Yes.
I sent this out to everybody. I didn't want to, I wanted to prepare and communicate with everybody. I wanted to be on the same page and be honest. If you had any inputs, I wanted to hear what you had to say because I, as part of the balcony sites business alliance, we have a group of several here. I want to thank everybody for showing up today and showing your support. I wanted to, wanted to, I've been checking everybody out, so. Yes, we want, we want to be heard, and also, we want your approval.
Yeah, it's very important for us to partner with our business community, and we want to do that, I think, as a, as a council. Mr. Garza, I did have a question for you. So, the purview of the city council is not to amend ordinances that have to do with zoning. Is that correct? That would have to go through the planning and zoning committee?
Well, eventually, we come back to council, but if it's a planning and zoning ordinance that's being amended, it first has to go to planning zoning commission for a recommendation to the council, then the council would then vote on that recommendation on that amended ordinance.
Thank you. And with that information, I'd like to table this until it is presented to the planning and zoning committee, and they make recommendations to the city council for, for.
And just so you understand also, when this occurred and was placed on the agenda, Mr. Garza replied back and, and Mr. Peralos in some correspondence regarding this, that it was simply just to discuss, and that any given time, any changes could be made, like you're doing right now, and be discussed later at another time, or in order to be drafted in accordance to the wishes of the council.
Right, but those should be done.
Okay, yeah.
The planning and zoning committee first.
This is not the same thing as the color wheel, is that correct?
My understanding is the color wheel is in the planning and zoning ordinance. I mean, the zoning ordinance.
Last month, we voted to repeal.
Okay, or was it not? Oh, repealing is, you can repeal an ordinance without having to go to the planning and zoning commission.
I don't think that's what the city council.
Yeah, it is amending an ordinance that needs to go to the planning and zoning commission.
Correct, and that's what I wanted to confirm with Mr. Ebersol, that his desire is to amend the, the ordinances and not actually full repeal.
Good for clarification. Okay, so we have a motion on the table right now to be considered. Do we have a second to Mr. Sines's motion?
Motion to table until planning and zoning is able to provide recommendations.
Okay. Okay, and we have a question before. Let me get a second first, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Second? Do we have a second? Councilman Lysia's seconds? Okay, Mr. Sellers, go right ahead.
My question is, why are we repealing it? I, I don't quite understand.
Can I say something? Okay. The current issues, this is, I got two sides of the coin. Okay, I've talked to the business, I'm in the business alliance. I talked to everybody from Office Depot to my, which is a major organization down to me, which is probably one of your smallest businesses in balcony sites. This is what the businesses are gonna say on Hillcrest. I had, I had no idea the codes were so unfair and would never have moved into balcony sites. They would not have moved their business in. The sign code is so limiting, it is useless to put up a sign. I put feather flags up, and they came and told me to take them down. That was from Firestone. I had a banner on the building, and it was too large. The police and the code compliance person ripped the temporary sign off the building. That was from Office Depot. And that sign must have been big and cost a lot of money. And then the next one was building is, is owned for ten clients, and no one can make any money off the clients. I need forty, so we got rezoning issues. When this, when did, when did this happen? I venture to say over the last ten years. This, this is a fine example, and then I also talked to the code compliance people, and this is what they said. This is the other side of the coin. This issue did not just happen. They have been around since two thousand seven, like the color palette and before. I cannot help, the codes are written that way. It is our job to enforce the codes that are on the books. So, if the, if the codes are not written properly, or to where businesses and balcony sites are not working together, and it says, it says the council is the one who's responsible for adopting the codes. So, we've got, we've got one side of the coin over here squeaking, and we got another one. And this, the first time I'm talking to you is to try and like, let's work together. That's why we had breakfasts. Let's work together, I don't.
Did you define the difference between a banner and a sign?
A sign is actually like either put on the building. A tempor, a temporary sign is a banner, like you get printed out at Home Depot or something like that. You can put up, I mean, Office Depot, and you can put on the building. And depending on the size of the face of the building, that makes all the difference. And they are so limiting that it's not even, like even the sole apartment.
They have size limitations, right?
Very.
And height limitations.
Height limitations, and the code is.
You did say temporary.
Right, and so, I put that into the code adjustments, and that's why we're talking about it. Should go back and get approved properly. And I do agree, I understand, we need a sol, we need to work together and get a solid package, because this is not the only code that's struggling with our businesses. There, there is a lot more other issues that we're struggling with that are just tying up our hands. And we're talking about redeveloping and taking care of our own. Where's taking care of our own? We're trying to bring in a new business that we want to tie their hands to? Let's just say they want to advertise. Are we gonna go to their building and rip their signs right off the wall? Because they.
Again, I, Mark, I, I think this needs to go back to planning and zoning to reevaluate. So, you've answered my question, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Councilman Burton?
I, I, I've seen both sides of the coin here. I'm using everybody's terminology here. And I've, I've seen a business leave because of signs, which was formerly Pretty Petals on the corner of Crestview and Hillcrest. And it was just so simplistic. It, it was, they wanted to hang a sign out there saying, Happy Mother's Day, buy your mom some flowers, or Happy Valentine's Day, send your loved ones some flowers. And they got tired of the regulations, so what did they do? They shut down, they went across Hillcrest on the other side in San Antonio and made big money over there. And now, they're on Callahan and Four Ten, and they've expanded their building three times, making really good money. That's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is, I'm not in favor of the, and I think Frank will remember this one, the, the, where the AT&T store is now formerly the T-Mobile store, formerly the Sprint store with the stripper sign out front, holding the free phone sign up against the street, you know. I, I'm, I'm not for the stripper sign. You know, it's, it's just, it's just, it's just a bad look, you know? But to, to help the businesses out, and, and it could be something so easy as maybe, let's test the waters on Hillcrest. Make, because I, I seem to remember there was a Hillcrest district. But I, I don't, I, I couldn't find it anywhere. I looked, I, I thought there was a Hillcrest district. It, it may just have been an O-O one district, but.
There's only, oh, sorry.
But let, let, let's, let's find a happy medium. Let's find a happy medium and, and let them make some money. If they want to, if they want a free chocolates sign this, this month for Valentine's, hey, so be it. But, you know, it, let's at least agree to, to test the water. I'm done.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
I, I, I agree with, with, with the discussion going back and forth. Mr. Lotte, do we have a appeal process in case someone doesn't agree with a code that are variance that can be submitted if it came to that nature?
Correct, the, the Board of Adjustments. If somebody has an issue, they can always.
So, so, so there is a process that, that can be used.
Right.
How many, how many complaints or how many issues have been brought forward pertaining to banners or signs?
I mean, we, that, I mean, to be honest, it, it can be, when you read the code and the requirements of having to take them down every thirty days, wait fourteen days. I mean, it, it is something that can be burdensome.
Okay, but, but there is a, a process in place that we can, citizens or businesses can use?
Right, but, but we, we don't see much for, for temporary signs. You're not gonna get a BOA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lysia.
Mr. Gore, as.
Councilman Sellers, go ahead.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
As being chair of Board of BOA, I have personally conducted multiple meetings about signs being too close to the street, or not high enough, or too high, or, and, and also being on planning and zoning for like five years. We, it took us five years fighting to come up with some kind of resolution for signs. And there's still a problem with them. It's an ongoing problem, and always will be an ongoing problem. And that's another example of why we should take this item back to planning and zoning.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Burton?
And, and with Mr. Lysia, what he's saying is, let's, let's, let's charge you a five hundred dollar Board of Adjustment fee. It's five hundred for businesses. And, and it would just zero out anything they would try to make trying to put their temporary sign up. It's ridiculous to ask for five hundred bucks.
And, and then that's, okay.
They're, they're trying to make a living too, man. They're, they're trying to, to, to sell their goods and, and let, let the people know that, and there's much, much traffic coming downhill across. Let them know that they're, they're open for business. And, and, and with, with his business, if he's making money, we're making money. We get the sales tax. Stop, stop being so constricted. It, it just makes good sense. Let them, let them earn money, so we make money, and it, it.
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
But I'm, let, I mean, are you finished? Okay. So, Mr. Lysia wanted to go, please, he was first. Go ahead, Mr. Lysia.
Go ahead and yield to, to Mr. Sines.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Sines.
Thank you, Mr. Lysia. So, I think we all agree, the five of us, that this ordinance needs to change, needs to be updated, but this is not the avenue to do it. So, I made a motion, it's been seconded, that we can send it back to the planning and zoning committee, and then they'll come back with their recommendations.
And that's reasonable, but we were having discussion, and I think everyone wants to express their feelings on how they feel about it, and I want to allow that for people to do that. Okay, Councilman Sines?
In the, in the sake of time.
You want to speak now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
In, in the sake of time, I'm gonna call the question on this item as well.
Well, we have two other people that want to speak, and from the, from the.
The, the, if I'm not mistaken, the purpose of the question is to stop the debate and keep moving forward.
So, you don't want to allow another citizen to speak?
If we're gonna not be able to make a decision or move forward, I think we should call the question, take it back to committee, and then bring it back with their recommendations as needed.
So, just for clarification.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, I've, I've called the, the question, how, how does that work?
Mr. Lysia? I ask to you, please, maintain your sense of decorum and just wait until I recognize you and give you the opportunity to speak. I know you called the question, and all due respect to you. I just wanted to mention that no one is wanting to make a decision here right now. Everyone understands that Councilman Sines has called for a vote originally to basically just discuss and to move, excuse me, not to discuss, move it into PNC for consideration. Our counselor has concurred that that is proper procedure to do so. The entire council here knows and realizes that no vote, no action is gonna be taken. But it's imperative that the citizens of the city of balcony sites and the business community get an opportunity to present their, themselves. It's not a matter of making a decision. It's giving them the opportunity for input. And if you're restricting that to them.
It, it's not a matter of restricting and.
Well, when you go to do that, and it's causing that, I just ask you to be considerate for the people that want to talk a little bit.
Okay.
And present it to you. Would you reconsider it?
Oh.
Would you reconsider your motion?
Well, after everything you said, I think I still had the floor.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so, so all that, that you said would, would go back with me still having the floor.
Well, but actually, I hadn't recognized you yet, because you jumped in, and I had to call your attention to that. So.
I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave it at, at where I had it, so we can move forward.
Okay, so, I just wanted to just say those kind words to you, and try to see if we could find a medium. Okay, Councilman?
So, so, we had motion to table and a second, and now there's a call to the question. That motion's been made. There's been no second yet, so.
So, let's call for a second on that.
Okay.
Councilman Sines has second, and so, that means we can have no more further discussion on the item, and it's been shut down.
Well, we, we need a vote first on that call to question. No, no, we need a vote on the call to the question.
Okay, so we have a call to the question. Let's take that vote and consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have Councilman Valverde is yea, Councilman Sines yea, Councilman Lysia yea, Councilman Sellers yea is correct, and then Councilman Burton nay. Okay, so we have four to one, the motion carries to.
To stop debate.
To stop debate on it. Now, we move to Councilman Sines's original motion, which was to send to PNC, correct?
And send to PNC.
Right, so we will now take that vote, and I need a, we already have a second to it, so I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on, that doesn't, it's not in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so David is aye?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, that motion carries five oh, to move it to the PNC for consideration and discussion. Okay. So, let's go ahead and move over to now item number, let me see, where were we at? We're in, number six, okay. So, now we move over to consider an action to appoint members to, oh, we had, well, it's closed off, that's right. I think we had Lamar Gillian that wanted to speak on that repeal. So, since the call has been made, we can no longer have that discussion. Sorry, Mr. Gillian. So, consider an action to appoint members to the Board of Adjustments Appeals for the term of June twenty twenty-four, June twenty twenty-six. We'll open it up for a vote, and then we'll have discussion. Or if you'd like to go into discussion first, and then we can call in a vote, whichever you prefer, Council. I'll leave it to your purview on that. Do we have any applicants, Delia? Anybody still know?
No, it's not for the applicants. We don't have any, but we need to reappoint and appoint two alternates from the city council to the Board of Adjustments.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So, if everyone understands now what the item is on the agenda for, who are those two individuals that we need to, that the council needs to consider?
Um, Juan Lysia was already appointed. He can be reappointed if, if that's what y'all wish. And David Sellers was a regular member, but he can't be anymore, but he can be an alternate.
Okay, so, consideration is to reappoint Mr. Juan Lysia as a alternate, is that correct? Correct? As an alternate, both of them?
Yes, alternate.
Okay, and then David Sellers cannot be considered as an alternate because he is currently serving, or he can?
Correction, he can be an alternate, he cannot be a regular.
He can, okay, David, I just wanted to clarify, get that right.
Mr. Sellers, do you want to accept that as an alternate member? I think that's, I think that's the question, do you want to stay an alternate member?
Yeah, let me. So, Mr. Sellers, would you like to be considered for that? Okay, Councilman Lysia, would you like to be considered as well to reappoint as an alternate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor for, oh, excuse me, we have it for discussion still. Anybody other discussion towards that? For those two considerations? Okay, now we can call for a vote to see if they will accept, or what is, what do you want to do?
They've already accepted. I'll make a motion to appoint the members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the term of June twenty twenty-four through June of twenty twenty-six.
All right, Sines has made a motion, do we have a second to his motion?
Yeah, Mr. Burton.
Okay, Mr. Burton has a second, okay. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Councilman Burton. I didn't have a second, so we have a second? Motion, yes?
Um, just to be clear, one position is two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. The other position is one year, and it'll be reappointed.
And that is who, so you can identify it on the record, who is that?
I'll, I'll amend that to reflect what the paper says.
Okay.
So what do we do with the first motion and the second that's already been taken?
If the my understanding is just clarification as to the terms.
So he wants to amend it, and we'll go ahead and move forward with the same motion of the two. Okay, so with your amendment, is the language that says for 2024, who's going to be that one that you mentioned, Delia? For clarification.
Councilmember Juan Lysia will be 2024 to 2026, and David Sellers will end in 2025, and then he could be reappointed then again.
Okay, great. That's good for clarification. Now we have a vote. It's called a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Do we have all ayes? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Burton.
Can we do a roll call and and instead of just all speaking at once?
I would prefer that too as well.
That's what I asked earlier, that you don't have to take the aye. Everybody says aye.
I I do it for purposes of just doubling up to understand that I.
But it's a little confusing, I think, for us.
Okay, all right, let's do that. So what we'll do then is we'll just call a roll call, okay? So Mr. Valverde?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Science?
Aye.
Mr. Lysia?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Uh, Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Great. Okay, so we have five one, five oh, motion carries. And we'll move on to item number seven. Discussion to adopt a tax abatement ordinance with guidelines and policy statements on establishing criteria for evaluating incentive application. Mr. Peralas?
Mayor, I'm going to take this one.
Okay, go ahead.
If the city wishes to be involved with potential tax abatements to try to attract businesses or retain businesses, before a city is allowed to enter into a tax abatement, it has to initially adopt guidelines. Guidelines are then utilized for which businesses will be eligible for tax abatements, and I'll give you an example. When the City of San Antonio first did their tax abatements, they basically said that if you were a hotel, they were not going to give you tax abatements. There were plenty of hotels willing to come to San Antonio, so they were not looking. Also, any business that wanted to come to San Antonio north of 410 would not be eligible for a tax abatement unless they were going to commit to more than 500 jobs. Their goal was to try to attract tax abatements south of 90 because of the lack of development in the southeast and west portions, and so that was their goal to try to attract. So they came up with tax abatement guidelines to try to attract certain businesses to certain areas. So tax abatements can range from, we'll give you 100% tax abatement for 10 years if you bring in 500 jobs and make a $10 million investment. And then they pro-rated that lower as you go along, and City of Siblo did tax guidelines. Basically, if it was 200 jobs or more and a $10 million investment, they would get a 10-year, 100% tax abatement. As it got lower with a fewer number of jobs, fewer amount of investment, the tax abatement went lower and lower. So it really is up to council of what they want to include in guidelines for tax abatement purposes. So one of the reasons this item is on here is to kind of get direction as to I have some cities that will not give 100% tax abatement. They limit it to no more than 75%. So that they know that they're going to at least continue to get 25% of that value that's increased depending on what businesses come into town. Your smaller cities like Balcony Sites and others probably do not lean on giving 100% tax abatements because you're trying to still make some money from the new business coming in, and you're not giving up all your potential taxes. So but again, just looking for direction from councils to what you're looking to possibly include in guidelines for tax abatements. If tax abatements are something you'd like to have as a tool chest, just because they meet the guidelines doesn't mean you're going to grant them the tax abatement. The guideline simply qualifies them to apply, the council still would have to say yea or nay to that tax abatement.
Mayor, I have a question. Um, as counsel, what voice do we have in the the term limits for a tax abatement? I mean, you say in 10 years and 10 years, and we limit that to three or four or five?
Yes, sir. You have the.
I just don't see 10 years.
Yeah, you have the total, yeah, you have the total flexibility to make it a five-year, a two-year, a three-year, up to 10 years. Tax year, 10 years would be the max that you would be allowed to give a tax abatement.
I just don't see 10 here.
And you have the ability to do abatements of both sales tax and or property tax. It's really up to the council what to include in your in your policies.
So that is something for council to discuss in open session?
Yeah, I mean, it's if we were negotiating with a specific company, no, we would be able to be allowed to go back into executive session. But just to discuss your general guidelines of what you'd like to see in tax abatements, what you don't want to see. For example, I just heard you say no 10-year tax abatements.
Exactly.
So it's really up to get input from the council as to what you would like to include in your guideline policies.
Do we have any more input on on that term? I'm asking this council. Do we, do we? I yield the floor to anybody who has any input.
Okay, we'll look we'll look for that in a minute.
I agree with Mr. Sellers. I think 10 years is just just too long of a time. I think we should cut that at least in half, if possible. It depends of, it depends on what type of company, what kind of business it is, and what kind of revenue we're talking about. It's possible. I'm just saying, five years at the max.
Councilman Burton?
Oh, yeah. If it's something that we're trying to do pretty pretty quickly, I would I would like to recommend or suggest that we give it back to the city administrator to work with a finance director and bring us a couple of proposals so we can see something other than just right now trying to figure out which is going to be the best route to go. I think if we can get general ideas instead of us at the last minute or real quick trying to come up with something might be beneficial to the city.
Councilman Burton?
I'd I'd like to see come up with something that if we are going to bait a tax, uh, let's say an ad valorem tax, that they're at least making it up on the backside on sales tax. I I if if a if a company's coming in here and I'm not getting sales tax, I don't want to see any abatement on property tax, zero. So that's just my two cents worth.
Mr. Peralas?
So just just so you know, and some of the examples that Frank gave are for communities that that have a lot of activity in 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 development. So one of the things that you look at for a city like ours is that you're you're looking to attract businesses. And so don't 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 discount the opportunity to be able to do that. The one of the things that you look at, there there are some that that simply do not build for businesses that generate sales tax or or the or the type of sales tax numbers that you were looking at. I think the one thing that you look at is you you need to look be able to look at, you know, what what in economic development terms, what businesses can locate here that can create jobs that can then allow for spending some of that money in the city. So there there's a lot of lot of things that you have to take into consideration in an effort to attract businesses. Right now, we're having trouble attracting. I mean, and and so we're looking for tools. One of the things that that we talked about was creating a tax increment zone. That's another tool that you use to be able to have to attract businesses and developers to come into the into the city. So don't discount anything until you look at at maybe a menu of some of the things that 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 can be included, but don't necessarily have to be provided. So you want to have a menu that's extensive, and then you can pick to see what what it is that that makes more sense to the community. And and if you look at at today's environment with with financing costs, that's another thing you look at is help people buy down the the expense on 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 interest rates to be able to then invest in your city. So there there's a lot of components that go into play than simply just yea or nay, because location, location, location does mean something. You've got enough green space that you can redevelop. That's great. If you don't, then you've got to figure out how how best to attract these companies.
Councilman Burton, go ahead, you continue.
I'll agree to disagree with you because probably more so than not, if if a business is here in balconies, they're not hiring balconies residents. Uh, the other thing is when when a business comes in here and we abate them, the and they're they're not a sales tax generating business, and they come in here and they want a 510, whatever, abatement on their property taxes. You know, we're still using our police force to protect their building. We're using our fire assets to head and forbid their their building catch on fire. So we're not coming that we're not coming out ahead just by plopping them here in Balcony Heights. We need to start thinking let's let's get in sales tax generating businesses, and then we'll start talking about abatements. But until then, uh, we hurt, we're hurting for money. You know, and and we need to start thinking outside the box a little bit to bring sales tax generating businesses. Then we could talk tax abatements. We're putting the pony in front of the or we're putting the cart before the horse. And with that, I yield.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I think Mr. Lysia had a good idea to direct the city manager and the finance director to working to work to put together some proposals for us. And that way, we can have a a good understanding of the impacts of these potential abatements. I agree with Mr. Burton and Mr. Sellers as well that we don't want to give away the cart, right? We don't want to give everything away, but we do need to have structure in place to incentivize businesses to come here. And if we can reduce their potential property abatement, property tax, or reduce potential sales tax not to hurt the city, right? We don't want to lose money on this, but if we can help entice these businesses to come here, that would be a a driver for further redevelopment investment here in Balcony Heights.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Science. Councilman Sellers?
Yes, uh, in response to Councilman Lysia turning it back over. I I think what what they're looking for is a limit from us before we turn it back over, so they have something to present the customers or the the business owners when they come in. So we have to make a decision, a a term limit some kind, so they have something to work with before we turn it over to them. And in response to Mr. Burton, I I believe these apartments across the street uh, had this tax abatement that was uh, you know, I mean, didn't sit well with a whole lot of people, and we don't want a repeat of that. So with that said, and and Mr. Valverde and I in agreement that 10 years is out, you know, I I'm thinking five or less. And I'd like some input on that.
What I think I'm hearing from the council is we want to do research. We want to reconsider any other options available to us out there, hear from staff, provide more input, and then make a logical determination as what's the best course of action on a case type, case basis scenario that presents itself in the future. Is that correct? But, okay, I think there's consensus on that, that everyone feels generally the same. I think Mr. Burton's views, his concerns have been expressed and voiced, so do we want to take any action on this? You we I think we want to move it to staff, right? Correct?
The action.
Who wants to make the motion in language for that?
I would make a motion to direct the city administrator and the city finance director to come up with proposals for potential tax abatements.
Okay, and do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Councilman Lysia has seconded that motion. Let's offer more discussion if you need, Mr. Burton.
I'd like to see that modified with a cap it. Well, no, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, would you consider doing that when staff brings back? Okay. Okay, so the motion still stands. Let's call the vote. All in favor? Can you do a roll call, please? Excuse me, I forgot about that. Valverde, Mr. Valverde? Councilman Science?
Aye.
Councilman Lysia?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers? You want me to move over to Councilman Burton and let you give seconds to think about it? Councilman Burton? Okay, aye. Councilman Sellers, you can think about it and give it a few seconds.
I think we should come up with a term limit before we hand it over. I think we should do that right now.
So do you want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion for three years.
Well, yeah, explain this, so that maybe he might understand.
Yeah, we already have a motion.
I make a motion to amend.
Yeah, um, so we're already in the vote, so it's too late to amend.
I understand that, but I want to make a motion to amend that after three years.
But we've already had the, we already have four votes, yeah, we can't amend. The amendment has to occur before the vote starts.
Right, and so you missed, you missed the opportunity.
I missed the opportunity, so I'm going to say nay.
Okay, just one second. Let me make sure we clarify that. So, Mr. Sellers, just so you understand, under the process of the Robert Tools of Order, once the vote has been taken like it was, you missed the opportunity to amend. It would have been done during the time of discussion. Okay. Okay, sir, I just want to make sure you were clear. Okay, Council.
And and just just to assist, we're we're not bringing back a a something that that's said in concrete. It's it's going to be something that you're going to still going to have to look at and and make suggestions, so there'll be another opportunity.
Like the one you just did now. You you'll have a you'll have a stab at it.
Oh, nothing's going to be presented to you business owners. The the policy still has to come back to council before it can be presented to business owners.
We have plenty of time to provide additional. So if they bring back something that's pie in the sky, thirty ten years for everything, 100% for everything, we can tell them no.
Yes, sir, Mr. Councilman Sellers. Councilman Burton?
And even if it does come back, if they make a decision, we still have the right as a council for counsel.
Okay, so this point of order, we have a vote on the table right now. Let's go forward with that. We're we're waiting for your vote, Mr. Councilman Sellers.
No, he voted no. He voted nay.
Okay, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry. So we have four and one name, four to one. Okay, motion carries. To send to P, I mean, send it to staff. Okay, now we will go down to number eight, consideration and action to provide authorization to solid waste providers to start meeting with Balcony Heights customers. I know that I read it right now, but if everyone needs a break, or would you like to stretch a little bit? Um, we can take a break. If you'd like to move and go forward and get this out of the way, we can do that as well. We don't want to take a break?
It's real quick, this one.
Okay, then if we're going to prefer, let's move forward. Okay.
This is real quick. This is just to to give me authorization to talk to Frontier, by the way, is Frontier Waste Solutions is is a firm. And they really want to start the the process of meeting with all the customers to identify what their needs are as opposed to my heart. I do have a heart. The pacemaker. No, so it it'll just be an opportunity for for the firm to to start making contact with all the customers uh, prior to the kickoff, which is October 1st, that'll be the handoff. And Frontier is now in Helotus. They they took over Republic. Uh, and they are also a finalist in Leon Valley, so they'll be close by everywhere. And they do, by the way, they did agree to all the the recommendations on the days to keep the days of pickup right now. So everything's moving forwards slowly, but but according to what what our plans are. This is just to to let them know that that they can go and start contacting these folks.
Any questions for staff? Councilman Burton?
So they took over Republic or they took over Republic in Helotus?
Helotus.
Okay, and then you know, you know, my 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 foot in the dirt.
I did talk to him about that. It it's it's a it's a universal number that they use. Everybody does. Everybody asks for the eight cubic yards. And but we'll talk, we'll continue to talk to them about that and see if there's there's some opportunities there for us to be able to accommodate, not everybody, but some folks. Like I said, hopefully with the neighborhood cleanups and twice a year, you know, we can alleviate some of those.
And I think they'll hopefully have a better track record too.
And and they do so far. I mean, the companies, the cities that I've talked to, they they're real pleased with them, so.
And and any any other question? Okay, any other questions? Any other safety measures, safety nets, just in the case their performance levels are not within the delivery services that we contract with?
So we we have, we have dates certain for for us to be able to get more benefits from them if if they if they don't comply. Obviously, there there'll be times when it'll be difficult. If we have a ice storm, things of that nature, those are covered. But a- as far as some of the things that we experienced with Republic, we we told them about that and that that would be unacceptable and that that there will be a penalty. At this point, we don't know if it'll be monetary or services.
And that will be provided in a written form.
That'll be in the contract. That will be in the contract.
Okay, that's, that's good. So, yeah, that's good enough for me. Yes, Councilman Burton?
And w- when our citizens call, if they have an issue, they, they will get to talk to a human being, right?
There, there, that has been reassured. So there, there's actually an individual that is inside the city's contract.
Excellent.
Any other questions from the council?
I have one question. Mr. Pedal is, uh, are we going to actually see the contract when it's done or not?
Yeah, no, you, you're, you're getting a vote on the contract next month.
Okay.
I just got a copy of it, so.
All right.
This is, right now is just to, so they can start the process, uh, the, it'll, the transition will take some time. I want to give as much time before October 1st, so that there's no questions.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And as to my understanding, Mr. Pedalison, our conversation on this was that, uh, basically they just want to reach out to the business community and they, and not really the residential community, but the business, just to see what the requirements are and what's ne- necessary.
So, so if you have an eight, eight cubic yard.
Right.
Container and all you really need is a six, then that's where all that.
Okay, that's, that's one to clarify for council's understanding.
He's being there.
Okay, so we, excuse me, go ahead, Councilman Sellers?
Is, are we gonna have a representative here?
For, when the contract is, is being, uh, considered, they'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So do we have, um, a vote for the, be considered and to act on? Councilman Sellers?
I'll second.
Has moved for the motion. And who's second? Councilman Science is second. Okay, and then now she'll do the roll call. Councilman, uh, Valverde? Councilman Science?
Aye.
Councilman Eliseya?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, that's five oh, that motion carries. So go ahead and, um, authorization to provide authorizations to a solid waste provider to start meeting with Balcony Heights customers. Okay, we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mayor, should we take a break?
No, they were gonna take that break afterwards, get a little foot break. Okay, that's good with me. So the time now is, uh, seven forty-seven, we will go into a small little intermission break. Okay, the time is six, seven fifty-six PM. And we have now, uh, re-initiated the council meeting. And we, we left off at the number nine now. So discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution placing candidate names and nomination for election to the board of trustees, TML IRP mayor. So basically what this is, I received a letter from TML and it's standard, uh, customary procedure. We, we pass it over to city council for discussion as to if they have any nominees to serve or be considered to serve on the TML board of directors and different, um, avenues of their organization. So, um, did everyone get a copy of that? Okay. What is the wish of the city council on this matter? Excuse me? Well, every year they pick a new person, you know, like the ones that were at the meetings that you saw, Tito and some of the others. Those are all people that were suggested and serving now in their capacity. So we want somebody from the city of Balcony Heights to serve. Then we just submit that name, we vote on it, we submit that name and it gets placed on that ballot and it gets sent into TML. They'll look at it, review it, and if they determine by their board of directors that that's the nominee that they choose to select for their board in whichever board of capacity they put you in, then it's approved and you'll be notified and then you'll start your new duties, uh, in whatever they assign to you to do as a board member. In a nutshell, that's what it is. So do we have anyone that would like to recommend a council member for that TML board?
Mayor, are there any like requirements for the individual that would potentially be on this risk pool?
Just the time, the time. You'd have to have the time to go because they're gonna require you to go to meetings and it may be in different regions, different places. And so that's the only really requirement here. Yes, go ahead, counselor.
Just like the TML board, the TML, uh, risk pool meets quarterly.
Right.
And some of those meetings are in Austin, some of those meetings are at, they vary in areas in, in Texas. It's usually a two-day meeting minimum, uh, for you to attend. And the risk pool is the entity that it's, it's affiliated with TML, but they have the, the, um, they handle all the lawsuits. Uh, the risk pool, they review policies and guidelines with regards to it. They also deal with the insurance provided to all, uh, the entities, for example, uh, with, uh, Hurricane Barrel that came in. The risk pool is very involved in helping those cities that were damaged, uh, i- by Hurricane Barrel, uh, to meet and, uh, address their insurance needs and respond to their claims and so forth. So the risk pool is very active with regards to, uh, litigation and claims and so forth for cities that are all members of TML.
And so you got, you asked, asked your question, do you wanna, do you have the time to go and attend these meetings? It's gonna be added to your already scheduled, busy schedule that you have. So that's basically the question you need to ask yourself.
Mayor.
Councilman Sellers?
It sounds like they have a lot of meetings all over the state.
Mainly in Austin.
And we're supposed to cover the motel rooms and, and expenses for every one of those.
Like the one we attended, they covered the cost of that.
But a lot more of them. So I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, what we're looking for right now is just a suggestion to a name if we want to nominate, a nominee. You want to nominate somebody to serve on that board from this council.
Yeah, I, I share Mr. Sellers' concerns as well. With the added expense of sending a person multiple times a year or travel and hotel lodging, um, per DMs, all that stuff, um, could add up for the, for our city and we are, you know, looking to, to scrounge every penny, so, um, I think David, what you're saying is to not take action to place a name on this. Is that correct?
Mark, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Councilman.
I just want to recommend that we, and, and they gave me the proper terminology at that convention, but I guess it's table it for another time.
Okay. And just for the purview of the council?
Not table it.
Yeah, this is not.
It's not called table. It's called something else. What is it called?
Table would be to delay for another time.
Well, it's table for another time. I, I, I just don't think we should, uh.
Mr.?
Yeah, there's a deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a deadline.
The deadline?
I, I do want to point out that the current TML board of directors for the, the risk pool, Mary Dennis, mayor of Live Oak, and a council member from Shirts are already members of the risk pool. So if you ever have issues, you could always contact them to make your, to communicate. But what, what the, this item is seeing whether or not there's any, um, interest of any of the council members serve. If there's no interest, then there's no nomination and there's no name being put forward. But you do have two in this area that both in Bear County that are, you are able to reach if you ever have issues with the risk pool.
Thank you, Frank. And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I really believe we need a lot more info on this, you know, and, and like, like Frank said, we can, uh, call and, and get that info and see.
Absolutely. It's within your purview.
More detail.
And just so clarification, so everyone understands on the board, this is not an item that I chose to put on the agenda. It was by virtue of proxy, meaning that I got the letter written to me, like I just got one from the Bear County Comptroller's Office about taxes being at a certain level. They just come in with the new rates on the taxes. So what I do is I just give it over to Delia and say, give it to the council, what they want to do. So it's not like something I'm pushing or promoting for that particular, uh, thing. All I'm doing is correspondence has said to me, I forwarded to, Miss, uh, Delia and Delia gives it to you guys for consideration.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate that I, I make a motion to table.
Do we have a second to the table? Uh, Mr. Sellers?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Sign has second. It's called a vote. Mr. Valverde?
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Science?
Yay.
The motion, yay. Mr. Eliseya?
Yay.
Mr. Sellers, Councilman Sellers, Councilman Burton? Okay, so we have all five nays. The motion is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All five yays. Yays to table.
Oh, we had yays to table? I'm sorry. So the yays to table, we have five oh. Motion carries.
So just, just to be clear that, uh, it, the tabling pretty much puts this to rest because it, the deadline is the second of August.
Yeah, so it's a moot point.
Done.
It'll be a moot point at that point.
So we're not bringing it back?
Yeah, exactly.
And definitely tabled.
Okay, let's move on down to the next item. Roles and responsibilities of mayor, council and city administrator, Councilman Asaya. And we have Mr. Lamar Gillian. Would you like him to speak first, Mr. Eliseya?
Sure, sure, that'd be fine.
Okay. Councilman Gillian? I mean, excuse me, former Councilman Gillian? Mr. Gillian?
That I'm not sitting in one of those chairs now. That's for sure. What I would like to add, just for historical purposes, is, um, maybe someone else. Mr. Burton, Councilman Burton may remember better than I do, but I think it was ten, twelve years ago, we came up with a council relations policy. So, uh, that's, that's when we, we, we had a situation in our government at that time where people were on the council were telling department heads or employees, do this or do that. And we had to bring that to a stop because it was very disruptive. We have a city administrator, that's his job. And it's outlined in his job description. You as council cannot have direct, uh, instruction to staff to what, what to do. That's not your job. It's not allowed by the council relations policy. That's why we have the city administrator. So that's just the history on it. So what we're looking at tonight is probably already covered pretty much in the council relations policy. It's a good policy. We fine tuned it a couple of times, didn't we, uh, Councilman Burton? And I think we got a really good document now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Mr. Gillian. Um, so we now have, Mr. Asaya has the floor.
Yeah, and you just, just wanted to, to go back and like, uh, Mr. Gillian said, we do have the council relations policy and it pretty much outlines everything. I think all of us are, are familiar with it. We've all seen it and read it. True. All of us on council have seen and, and read the, the conservation policy?
It was never provided to me, uh, or I don't think Mr. Burton, when we first came in, he might have had it from previous administrations, right? Yes. Yeah, so I, I was never provided any, any information on that. I had to obtain it, uh, from another source, which I didn't get all of it, but I have some and I don't even know if it's the current version. So I was never orientated.
I'm gonna ask for, for clarification for who's supposed to provide that and if that was provided.
I believe you do have a copy, mayor. Um, I will verify tomorrow.
Okay.
A- actually, here, here, here's my copy. So I don't know if you would have found it.
I didn't get that.
Okay.
I didn't get that.
Okay, so if, if you didn't, that, that's the one that I received. You might have received a smaller one. So
Go ahead.
If, if, uh.
I asked, I had the list of what's in that notebook and I asked each of you if you wanted all of it or just some of it. And some said, I just want this, this, this and this. And the only one I gave everything to was David Sellers.
Okay, I, I don't recall ever talking to you about it, but I'm just looking for the, do you remember? I guess you have to look back, specific to when?
But I, I know that, um.
Cause I have saved all of them here.
If it wasn't verbally, but I did ask the question. You remember, Mr. Burton?
I, I've, I've got a copy of when I left in, what was it, 2016 or whatever, 2017? But that one's, that one's adopted twenty, it's a twenty-one or something like that, something.
Twenty nineteen is the last one.
The one after that was adopted August fourteenth, two thousand and six. Workshop October, October eighth, two thousand and thirteen.
I will look.
Is it? Is it in Dropbox? I don't remember seeing it.
Uh, I can put it in the Dropbox, but, um, you gave me the list of what you wanted and that was on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I also showed you the list and you said, I have a lot of this stuff already.
No.
And when you were in my office.
Okay, well, either way, um.
But I'll, I'll verify and I, I can give it to you. I can email it to you. It's no problem.
But I don't recall any of that.
Okay.
I mean, it's okay, we can, we, we'll get it and, uh, once and for all and we'll have it.
Well, well, moving, moving forward, that explains a lot of the, uh, concerns that I have pertaining to the, uh, policy and procedures, because in that document, it outlines our functions as employers, as financiers, as public relations and all things of that nature. The one item, one of the items that I want to cover, since we are employers, it's imperative that we treat our employees with dignity and respect. That we as a council have allowed some employees to be disrespected, humiliated, or whatever the case may be. But now I think I get the picture that since you weren't aware of it, some of these things were happening. So it's, it's imperative, whether it was documented or not, that we understand our roles as elected officials to defend and protect our employees. Also in that same document, it calls that we should engage and bring forward and respect the visitors and people attending our meetings. That too, I think we've gotten away from that and have not treated some of our guests in, in the best manner that, that should have been. But now knowing that this document was not available, that kind of makes a little bit of, of sense why some of these things were, were, were gotten out of control.
Can you be more specific?
As, as, so far as what?
Who's, who's talking to employees and, and who's being?
I'll, I'll, I'll get to, to, to that one in my, in my next section. But in, in, and for this, for the, for the employers, just in the general meetings, I know some, uh, staff have been addressed in not the most appropriate manner to, 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 to put it lightly. And we need to be careful how we speak to our employees. Whether we agree or disagree, we are employers and we're doing it in a public setting. Does, I think that's, makes it clear enough unless I need to go a little bit more into detail.
Anyone else need the floor?
No, okay. So from, from, from there, then I'll, I guess I'll jump into the, the role of the city administrator. That also is outlined.
Where, where, um, so you want to jump into?
It, I think it's all the same one.
Okay, gotcha.
It's all the same one.
Okay, gotcha.
It, it, it outlines and describes the roles and responsibilities of the city administrator. And that's covered under city ordinance number nine dash six, I'm sorry, six one, six dash nine one, and it's also covered in the city policy three one two nine, where it pretty much outlines that the city administrator is the one that takes care of the day-to-day operations of the city, not the mayor or us. The city administrator runs the city, takes care of the people, directs the people and everything of that nature. These two documents outline that if we have problems, suggestions or changes need to be made, we go to the city administrator and then he trickles it down. I believe in some areas we've gotten away from that. I think it's imperative for the growth of the city and the welfare of our employees that we really work at keeping that structure together. That pretty much sums, sums up what, what, what I needed to say now. If you wish, I can deliberate some more on it, just let me know. I have just really concern on the way we've, uh, allowed some of the discussions to, to move forward over the last two months.
Mr. Burton, you be more specific?
Okay, we'll, we'll go to, uh, last month when we had the, uh, nominations of the, uh, Economic Development Committee that one of the members of the council directed the police chief what to do. That's not our function. Law enforcement takes care of their thing and they move forward.
Are you referring to me?
Oh, no, 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 not, not at all.
Because I asked, I, I did ask the, the police chief to shut down the cursing, the outrage and the, the.
And, and, and that's, that's definitely not what I'm referring to. No, and, 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 and that particular one is, is, is.
And that's more distracting to me than anything up here.
Right.
Having a person go just ballistic at that microphone. And then as she's finally being escorted out of the room, you can hear in the hallway out there still screaming and cursing.
Right.
That's uncalled.
But it, it is uncalled for and I agree was totally uncalled for. But the way it was allowed to carry on and members of the council continuing with a debate anti, and, and antagonizing and moving forward is what created the big problem. Had the, the, in my opinion, had that been. Had the, the, in my opinion, had that been handled in a totally different manner, we would not have the outburst that we had. Here, it, it, it.
I will admit that I did direct John Ahara.
No, no, and, and.
And I asked, I said, can you please do, do something? So if that's out of council, council policy, I would gladly do it again.
And, and I don't, I don't think I'm referring to items that we discuss here. I'm more concerned what's happening on the outside. We are going to have a couple of things that we're going to discuss, but we're, we're in the chambers. Then yes, we do have the right and the responsibility to ask for things to be done. But to direct our police chief to do legal actions, I think it's out of the purview of us to, to do. Okay.
Like you're saying it without saying it, just say it.
He wants you to be more specific.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying it. You're saying it without saying it, just.
Okay.
Just say it.
M-Mr. Mayor, you have gone above and beyond the roles and responsibilities of a mayor. You have prevented, interfered and interrupted the operations of the city by demanding that the city administrator do different things, do different functions. That is the role of the city administrator, not the council or the mayor. That's what I'm trying to get to. You've uh created, I believe you've created a hostile environment amongst the employees. And we've got to find a way to correct that for the benefit of our city, for the benefit of our residents. And for us to prosper as a city, we have to learn to, to manage that.
Yes, um, I appreciate your comments. But as Mr., as Councilman Burke has stated again, be more specific because you're making some pretty uh serious allegations without specifics as to exact facts of where it occurred and where now that you, you, you pretty much have singled me out.
By reference.
Be more specific, to be fair to the people that are listening, that are going to be seeing this meeting and the people that are in the audience right now, be more specific. Give the exact instances of what you're talking about. Employees as well as the city administrator or anyone else.
Okay. We'll go, we'll go back to your, your first meeting when you said that no one else was going to be hired and no one was else that's going to move forward until you decided what was going to happen. That is the direction, that is the function of the city administrator. When uh we had the uh situation with the situation with, with the uh, the phones, the way the police chief and the fire chief were humiliated and the tone that you used to correct them for whatever reason, that tone, in my opinion, was not appropriate to do that. In the audience, we've had a couple of residents that were, what I saw conversing with a council member and you directed them or very inappropriately redirected them as to what to do and what not to do. With Madeline Slay when she was in the back. I believe you're the only one that heard her and you made very strong inappropriate comments to Miss Slay.
Be more specific.
Hmm?
More specific, what is the language that I use?
All, all that is in, in the video, the tape and all that other stuff. I am here to, to provide you, I'm here to provide you the, the surface of the, of the whole thing.
Well, you're giving not the full picture because you obviously are getting secondhand information from wherever your sources are at.
It's all documented.
So if you, if you, if you are going to make an accusation, have your factual of facts in order, don't give half-truths. Because that's what you're doing, you're providing a half-truth, you have no basis. You've provided no support for your accusations. And I have to categorically deny each and every one of them because that's not the way it's occurred.
Okay, can you give me an example of one that you do not agree with?
When you say that no one else is going to be hired, first of all, where are you referring to, what date you're referring to that occurred? And in what context did you get that information from? Who told you that?
You said it during the council meeting. You said very specifically that no one else was going to be hired. All the positions were going to be frozen until you had the opportunity, look at the budget and see what else could be done.
No, sir, that was not what was said.
And, and, I, I don't think we had the, the video at that time. Unfortunately, we did it, but I think there's enough people in, in the audience and members of the council that do remember that, that conversation.
If I may re, may retort and respond to your, your, your concerns and respond to your, your um your statements, that is not what I said. And I always, always include that the council is the final word on everything, okay? I've come to the conclusion and know that that is a fact. Now you've heard me say it over and over in the council meeting. It's your purview, you are the policymakers, you make the decisions. I bring the facts to you, I bring the subjects to you for consideration. And then you decide as a city council member, as a policymaker, to determine whether you're going to adopt, reject, or whatever other measures you're going to take. And I mentioned even to you that I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. I'm not going to fight about it. I'm not going to allow anyone to push me into a public display of embarrassment. As the mayor, I have a responsibility to lead in a professional and a very, very uh responsible and respectful manner. When I have addressed anybody, including employees, it doesn't make a difference who they are and including yourself. When I have addressed you, it's always in a respectful manner. I never use curse words, I never use any type of language other than factual information that is offensive to the person that's hearing it because whether they believe it's the truth or not, I will always try to back up everything that I have with factual information. And so, uh, let me finish responding to Mr. Science, please. So, you know, and I, you know, I, these other things about the phones with the police and fire. If you read the Robert's Rules of Order carefully, and if you have, I, I would suggest and recommend.
I, 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 I have read them.
Okay, so in there, the mayor controls the meeting. And if you've seen in the past administration, the former mayor also did the same thing when there was things that was out of place. People were speaking that she did not want or felt that it was in, not in the purview of the council meeting. She would make the person stop talking or say, that's enough, we'll move on. So, the mayor has, it's within his purview to do that. In order to control the decorum of the meetings. And when you have people that are laughing, giggling and, you know, just basically unprofessional decorum, it is imperative upon me and I would be remiss in my position and my responsibilities if I did not call that to attention. Now, if you may recollect, Mr. Lasse, I have been very, very fair across the board with everyone. Not just a certain group or a certain individual that I target. If you remember correctly, when Mr. Sellers and Mr. Burton were interrupting Mr. Valverde, when he was very serious on his object and returning to the burn ban, I interrupted and I called to their attention and I said, please have respect for your colleague, allow him to finish what he's saying, whatever you may think it's silly to you, it's very important to him. So if you can call your attention to his deal, so that is my purview as mayor to do so. My intent is not to disrespect anybody. My intent is to maintain the decorum of the media in a very professional manner so that we can function efficiently. And we don't spend so much time on these very frivolous, frivolous things that are being brought before the council. And repeatedly, I have told each and every one of you how important it is to be focusing and thinking outside the box with what are the most important issues that are conducive for the community to move forward in the current financial stress that we are in and face the challenges. And to start putting things on the agenda that really matter to our city. Not things that are frivolous about, let's attack the mayor. Let's make him the, the butt of the joke, let's make him, and let's curse at him, let's do all these things to him to make his life miserable so that he cannot function in his capacity in trying to govern and help his city just like other members want to do. And that's all I'm trying to do. But I keep getting subjected to this controversial uh things that are being put on the agenda that are really time-consuming on the taxpayer and the citizens and the people in the community. But I have respected everyone, everyone. And when the situation came up with Miss Slay, I was not the one that cursed. I was not the one that disrupted and impeded the meeting. I simply utilized my opinion as mayor to say, I do not recommend that individual because of her character, because of the past events that she has done in the past that's created problems for the community. And she has walked away from meetings, she's been embarrassing to the, to the citizens in the community and I did not recommend it. And you guys continue to move forward and that's your purview to do so, to put her on the board. But I had the right, just as you have the right, to express yourself like now, to say something about that. And that's all I did. I didn't cause the disruption, I didn't cause her to come back and start screaming at me and impede the meeting, she did that on her own. And that only strengthened and exemplified why she should not be on the board and that's what I said. And that's it.
Okay.
And so if that was, you know, something that, that I disrespected her, I have to absolutely disagree and categorically disagree with you.
Okay, now, now that we have brought that, that issue to light and, and I agree, we, you have put several items that are not as important as they should be on, on the agenda. And I must go back and, and defend what you or rebut what you had said about Ms. Madeline and the way you handle it very professionally. In my opinion, you attacked her in a personal matter, bring, in a past, personal way, bringing items to the table that had nothing to do with the issue on hand. You bringing up items that, when you were a civilian and she was a civilian, it seems that there's still a conflict that you do not want to accept. Now, you did, you did, you have said and you do say that it's your purview, it's your opportunity to agree or deny whatever the case may be. And you say that very eloquently and very well on items that you feel are not going to get approved. On other items, you take a different approach. Now, I, in this, for the sake of time, I'd like to, to, to close this and just bring to light what we are doing as a council. And as a council, we have got to work together for the betterment of the city, community, our employees and for the future of our city. Thank, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Councilman Science. Thank you. So I want to uh read something into the record that will refute some of the, some of the comments you made um in rebuttal to Mr. Lasse's uh comments. So I have a email from May ninth, twenty twenty-four from your personal email, johnnyawkrefor@gmail.com. And I'll scroll down to, as it, quoting your, your messages, "As a proactive measure, I have suggested for you to suspend any ongoing hiring processes and refrain from hiring new employees until myself and the city council have thoroughly reviewed, analyzed and determined the best course of action to tackle our financial challenges and implement effective solutions for the betterment of our city." So that goes exactly to what Mr. Lasse was saying, you were stepping outside of your role as mayor and even at that time, you were just the mayor-elect.
In order, he wasn't mayor.
That, that, you're interrupting me before I can finish. Before, before he was even mayor, he was acting in that role, calling himself mayor-elect and directing the city administrator to freeze hiring for necessary police and uh public works employees. So, as a citizen, he doesn't even have the right to tell Mr. Mr. uh Morales what or what not to do. That falls to the city council, our job is to direct the city administrator. The ci, the mayor does not have that responsibility. And that's, that's, that's what Mr. Lasse has been referring to, as stepping outside of your role. And that is documented, I have the email, I'll forward it to you if you like.
I have it.
Okay.
I have the email.
It, it is documented.
When I can respond to you.
It is, is it a documented uh instance where you have stepped outside of your role? There's also the instance when uh June twenty-second at the Wonderland Mall, where you directed the city administrator to bring in the uh director of um of uh economic development on his day off to come into the office to answer your questions. And again, that was.
Respond to uh an inquiry that could have been.
An inquiry where you wanted to.
Been criminal.
Where you wanted to file criminal charges that were unfounded.
I didn't want to file criminal charges, I wanted to investigate it, there's a big difference.
Okay.
And see how you twist, how you twist words around.
Regardless, you were directing the city administrator outside of your role to direct another city employee to come and report to you and answer questions. And that was again, outside of your role as.
You don't have all the facts, that's not absolutely true. But let me refer now to your first email that you referred to right now. To clarify for the benefit of the citizens that are listening on this, it's going to be recorded and they'll be able to see it and also the people here. The key word you're Mr. Mr. Science, that you're missing on that email is read it again. Suggestion, read it, read it very carefully, read it again, read it.
I read it.
No, read it again so the purview of the people can hear it. Suggestion, read it.
You, it's still, you do not have.
That, that is not in order, that is not, it's a suggestion. Read it, please read it for the benefit of, please read it for the benefit of the public, please, one more time.
I read it.
I, I, I asked you to please read it one more time.
So what I'm saying is.
Yeah, it's a waste of time there. It's a waste of time and it's.
And, and, and that, that's. And that, that's why I chose to close when I did. But Mayor, you continued the discussion the way you've done it. So now let's close and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so a motion hasn't been made and, but you see, this is how things go. You talk about it and then you don't, you say what you want to say, but you don't allow me to explain the, the situation correctly because you're giving the impression to the public of a whole different scenario. And I'll close with that. So it's not fair to me that you accuse me of stuff and don't provide the facts.
I didn't make any accusations.
Suggestion, sir, it was not in order, it was a suggestion.
You also stated during the meeting in May, after you were sworn in, you made a speech and you referenced that you had told Mr. Morales to not hire the police department.
Until the council as a whole has an opportunity to review the budget and see where we can save money for the citizens of Balcony Heights because we were in a serious financial challenge that I recognized early on in the game and I was trying to take control of it very quickly so that we can move forward with serious, serious business for the city, not this stuff.
So these, these positions.
Handering us right here.
Those, those positions were not outside of the operating.
Go ahead.
I'm still talking, sir, you directed your, your comments to me directly.
Okay, go right ahead.
So you.
Go ahead.
You were telling him not to hire positions that were already in the budget. We weren't hiring additional uh staff, we weren't growing staff, these were backfill. So it wasn't impacting the budget. In fact, it was actually helping the budget because we weren't going to have to pay our police officers overtime to make up for the, the missing manpower.
But see, that doesn't allow for the council to review it and discuss like we're having.
It's not up to us to direct.
So that, so that.
Administrator to hire necessary.
So that we don't.
He has that job, that's clearly stated in the ordinance that he has purview over hiring and, and personnel decisions.
God, Mr. Science, you and Mr. Lasse are just really, really.
Bringing, bringing.
Really causing a lot of issues.
Okay, I've asked for this to be closed several times. At this point, I'm going to call the question, maybe this will close the discussion. Thank you.
There we go. I don't, I don't find the humor in it at all because I think that it's just silly.
Question has been called.
Okay.
And second.
Question been called, we need to take a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Valverde, vote.
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Science?
Yay.
Did you say yay or nay, I'm sorry?
Yay.
Yay?
Yay.
Okay.
Stop it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Science?
Yeah.
Mr. Lasse? Mr. Sellers, Councilman Sellers? Yay also, okay, Councilman Burton, yay, okay. Okay, motion carries five. Um, oh. All right, let's go into another item and get that out of the way. So um remarks and observations of the last three council meetings, Valverde. Uh, go ahead, we had Lamar that wanted to speak on that item, but he did, okay.
Say it again, sir?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, I just wanted to share my observations for the last three months. It seems that uh rules, ordinances and policies for the city council members are being ignored and replaced with anger, disrespect and unprofessional behavior. As elected officials, we can't continue to operate like this. I have seen nothing but chaos. Our current leadership is turning into a fiasco and it has created uncomfortable and hostile environment for staff and employees. I've seen disrespect for our mayor, our staff, and colleagues as well. There have been many accusations and unnecessary things said to one another in public and in closed meetings. I know these, these things cause anger. But in my opinion, or in our positions, operating like this is not the way to conduct business. All concerns and issues need to be approached in a correct and professional manner. We must all follow protocol. And if anyone is not willing to follow protocol, I believe you're in the wrong place. So far, we have been too busy flaunting our egos and blaming each other for things which are in the past and not concentrating on taking care of the needed issues for the future. This sets a bad example for the public and opens a door for the media. This childish behavior among elected officials will be all over the news. Regardless of personal feelings towards any of our staff, employees, elected officials, we must stay professional and at least respect the position. Since it, since it appears that everyone is forgetting the rules, ordinances, and policies which have been created for the mayor and council members, I am presenting a couple of highlights from our city relations policy. Just as a friendly reminder, one of the highlights is that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city and represents the city in all matters and whose authority and actions are derived by the will, discretion, and direction of the council. Another one is in accordance to section twenty two point forty two, the local government code, the mayor shall give to the council any information and shall recommend to the council any measure that relates to improving the finances, police, health, security, cleanliness, and comfort of the city. Another section of that policy is code of conduct for mayor and council members. Highlights there is council members shall demonstrate respect and courtesy to each other, to city staff members, and to members of the public appearing before the council. Council members shall not unreasonably interfere with the everyday duties of the city staff and shall limit meetings and phone calls with the city administrator to discuss city business. I believe this policy is very important and the council must comply with it. We cannot take matters into our own hands and try to make drastic changes by saying I'm in charge. If anyone disagrees with this policy, you have the option to request changes and submit them to the council for approval. As you all know, the council of the municipality is the final approval for any action or changes in ordinances or policies. In conclusion, we must stop this fiasco because if this chaos continues, our community is not going to prevail. Our leadership is not getting anywhere. And we are setting our community up for failure and opening the door to be become the biggest joke of our residents and the surrounding cities. We have many challenges ahead of us, and there's no time for this type of behavior. Thank you. That's what I wanted to share with you all.
Thank you, Mr. Valverde. Appreciate that very much. And and just in light of that, I've always advocated that. My newsletter, I advocated it. And it is sad that we are here today in this particular situation. I have done my best to stay away from filing or adding any items on the agenda under those rules and regulations because my first concern has always been the city. And I didn't want to give the city a black eye with these things that I have been subjected to. It is very unfair and it's hard to maintain your composure. And it's difficult to lead under those circumstances of what I refer to as organized opposition. And what I mean by that is it's not one person. It's numerous people. And you can see it, and it exemplifies itself by its own actions. And I have tried my very best, and I will continue to try. This will not dissuade me. No, will it? It stop me from moving forward. Um, I will operate and have been trying to operate under those rules. In light of what you said, Mr. Valverde, it's very important that we recognize that there's always two sides to an argument, a fight, or debate, or whatever may transpire. And you have to consider the other side as well as to that party's individual involvement that could catalyst that to occur. So in consideration, you need to, people need to look at that and say, okay, can it be the mayor's fault all completely on everything that is occurring? Um, or is there another party to it that has ignited that, that has caused that because of their actions? I take this job very seriously. I'm not in it here, and I want to make it again very clear. I have no desire for power. I have no desire for any kind of, you know, authority or anything of that nature. I know, see, that's, that's a primary example, but we're not gonna, we're gonna ignore that. Okay, because that is a, an enticement to engage in the exact behavior that I'm referring to. So when you have former administrations, former mayors, former council members, whoever it may be that engage in that kind of activity to prompt a reaction from me, I won't allow. And I'm not going to allow that because I'm more, I'm higher than that. I take her a higher road than that. So my responsibilities are very serious, and I don't care for, I'm not going to be a longevity mayor. I don't intend to be here for sixteen years, ten years, or whatever it may be. I came to do a job. I expressed my opinion and my desire when I went out campaigning to the public. The public agreed with me. The public understood what I was going to do. And I am here, and I have these objectives in which I'm going to accomplish one way or another, as I mentioned to the council. I'll bring it before your attention, and it's within your purview to either adopt or reject. But you are the sole persons that if you have intentions of a political career of running for mayor, of running for council, or seeking reelection, then these are the things you better consider when you are acting the way you are in the council meetings and conducting yourself this way. Because I'm not going to be here. I'm here just to try to correct some things that occurred that are very, very, very serious that has put us in a very precarious situation. And without pointing fingers to anyone tonight, those issues need to be addressed as soon as possible because they're going to affect jobs. They're going to affect people's livelihood because the decisions that we're going to make are going to be necessary to be able to correct the financial strain that we're in. So my objectives are to get to those goals as soon as possible. And I'm trying to avoid this as much as possible. So you didn't see, and you haven't seen me place anything on the agenda that would be like what I have placed today. And the only reason I placed the item, the two items on the agenda concerning Mr. Morales, city administrator's position, and Mr. Lusaya's serious condition that occurred is because I was pushed to a no return situation. And so I felt it necessary to follow the rules because I would be remiss if I didn't tell you guys about it. So this is why I placed it on the agenda reluctantly because I did not want to shed any negative light on our community to have that possible news coverage that might say, oh, they're fighting. Look at them. They can't get along. And then I've always expressed, what do you think this is going to do right now, just because of where it's occurring? And because of the things you put on the agenda? We could have done this in executive session. But you chose to do it in a public forum so that you can air our laundry out and dirty to everybody.
If I may, I think.
I'll let you speak in a minute, I promise you. And so you choose to go with a a public airing of this when we could have done this in executive session privately, knocking around on ourselves, come to a conclusion or not come to a conclusion, but we would have done it privately. Our whole objective is what Mr. Burton has been saying and others have been saying. We're trying to bring in business in our community. How do you think this is going to reflect on potential investors looking to come into our city? If they see this kind of friction and obstruction and fighting and arguing and me having to defend my position against these things? So this is where the travesty is in what we're doing, and I fully recognize it. This is why I didn't engage to do that. So Mr. Lusaya, please, you can go ahead and and speak.
Okay. I appreciate every, everything you said, working together and and things of that nature. We we can go on here till till tomorrow and blame back and forth. Let's, let's go back to the beginning. We all started, was started the way it was started, the way you you came in. But we all understand now, we're going to move forward. I've voiced my concerns. I hope we can agree to move forward. In the past, you have told me several times that it's personal. I firmly believe a lot of the things that you do and say are personal. And with that, I will close and we'll keep moving forward.
You're attacking again, see? So it's, I don't really believe what you're saying, but okay, let's move forward.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Councilman Valverde, go right ahead.
I want everybody to understand what I covered here. I'm sharing this with the whole council, not just one or two people, three people, the whole council. Uh, and if you have not seen the, what I just read here, the policies, it's a good idea to read it so you can get the whole picture because I just read some highlights. This and there's another couple of more resources that you need to get a hold of. But I don't want anybody to feel that I was addressing you personally. I'm talking to the whole council as a whole.
I I appreciate it, Mr. Valverde. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So there's no action item on this item. And are we finished with this particular item on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with finishing and everyone finished having their input in it? So thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion and possible action on agenda item limits and discussion time limits. Mr. Valverde, you have the floor again.
Yes, sir. Um, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to see if we, if we can establish a limit on agenda items and a time limit for discussion on each agenda item at future council meetings. Uh, the reason for this request is to eliminate excessive time spent on long discussions, arguments, and ego flaunting, which does not accomplish anything other than creating a hostile environment. We need to consider our employees who work the following day and our family members. It's not fair for them. Uh, it's not fair for us to have them, have the late meetings due to long discussions or discussions like such as a meeting in May or June. My my suggestion is to create a policy or ordinance, if possible, to have a firm shutdown for council meetings no later than nine thirty P M. And to limit discussion to no more than ten minutes per agenda item unless extended time is approved by council. Whatever items are not taken care of, reschedule them for the next month's meeting. There's no need to call a special meeting to continue with the items not taken care of unless it is an issue which needs immediate attention. And I'll open it up for the, for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion on this item from anyone? Councilman Burton?
Uh, I think maybe you're referring to the first meeting, the one A M. Or whatever it was.
Twelve thirty A M.
I I don't think that's going to happen again. I think we've, uh, I think, I think we all agree that that was a, um, that's, that's.
A long meeting.
That's, that's, that's a one-off meeting. It's not. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna subject people to looking at me for the one in the morning. So I I don't think there's any need to, to, um, take action on this. It that, it 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 was what it was. And and tonight's meeting, we had some airing of the dirty laundry and stuff. But when, uh, you know, right, right now, we're, we're lame ducks. We are lame ducks, you know? If I say it's black, someone's going to say it's white. Just because. No, no real, no real substance to it. So I I just say we we learned from that first meeting. Let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Councilman Sines?
Uh, with all due respect, Jack, I I disagree a little bit. Um, it's almost nine, and we're only on twelve. We still have thirteen, all the announcements. Uh, then we have the the closed items. We're looking at probably ten P M. Um, so I I agree with Mr. Valverde. We should look at something that would limit discussion, limit speeches uh, from the, from the days uh, where we can read the, read the item and get to discussion, but limit it to even ten minutes, I think, is a little long unless it's agreed on by the city council as a majority of the city council to continue discussion. I would say like a maximum of five minutes.
Councilman Burton, are you?
I think. I I think that's the wrong move to make, uh, me personally. You're taking another power away from the mayor and making it a, a policy. And the mayor should be able to to shut that down and take care of it there. You know, if you all want to vote on this, y'all are going to win. The, y'all, y'all are, again, if I say it's white, you're going to say it's black.
So I, I.
No, 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 no.
Hold on.
And you have a little, you have a little problem. No, you've got a big problem. Don't, don't go, don't go minimizing, oh, I have just a little problem. You got a big problem with it. So just say it. And that's, that's, everybody in here, they they say things without saying it. Just speak your mind. Be upfront. Go ahead. We're big, we're adults in the room. So this is an unnecessary action. I don't think, I don't think it needs to be uh, a ordinance or a resolution. You're just trying to take away another power of what the mayor can shut down. So it it it's already in the ordinances.
So. Councilman, would you like to retort?
Yeah, so, um, I I disagree with what you're saying, that I automatically disagree with what you're saying. I know in this case, but we've had a lot of discussions as a city council uh, for the last three meetings where we've all voted five oh, five oh, four one, five oh, five oh, where I've agreed with what you've said, and you've had some great ideas that I've voted for. Uh, David Sellers has had some ideas where I voted for as well. Um, so there's no, just because you're Jack Burton or because you're David Sellers, that I disagree with you automatically. So I have asked for additional information for items where very minimal information was provided, and we were asked to make snap decisions. Um, but there is no us versus you guys. There is a city council where we all need to discuss things. But we also, I think, should have some limitation to this. So we're not talking for twenty or thirty minutes or listening to somebody talk for five, ten minutes at a time.
Okay, Councilman Lusaya, and then I'll speak after you.
Yeah, and 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 to to echo on that, I don't, and I will disagree that it's us against them. I myself chose to get involved to the community to help the community. It's not what I want. It's not what I desire. It's not what I make sure you don't get. I'm in this for the betterment of the community, for the betterment of our city, and to help us prosper. Now, we are going to disagree, and I hope after this, we will learn to agree to disagree, to move forward. But I would take offense to you making the assumption that it's a clear cut. It's not. And like, like Mr. Science has said, we have agreed. And there are going to be times that we're not going to agree. And that's the nature of this. This is why we have a council. Otherwise, there'd be no sense in us being here if everything was going to go one way. So to 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 clarify, I am here for the betterment of the city and the community and the employees and for the prospering of the city.
Councilman Burton, are you finished, Mr. Sam?
I make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Mayor.
Any five.
May I say something, please?
Councilman Valverde, go right ahead.
I didn't bring this up for a long discussion. Agree, disagree. Let me put it to you this way. I will not and not going to tolerate long meetings because I'll be doing what I did at the last time. I'll be walking out. And and it's not like you say, y'all say something without saying it. Just say it. If I want to say something, I'll say it. Don't, and and don't say that it's three of us against you. Say again.
Okay.
Don't, don't say that it's, it's all three against you to, uh, because it's not that way. Okay?
I think he, he, he said that if he said it's black, it's white. So he wasn't saying anybody else. I think he, he, he said that if he said it's black, it's white. So he wasn't saying anybody else. He just said if it was white and black. So again, let me just add on this particular subject. And that is that I have tried to be very fair, Mr. Sines and Mr. LaSaya, on this object. Now, let's take the other flip of the coin on this. Let's say that I was to take the approach of limiting your conversation and limiting your input in these meetings. You know what you would do? You would accuse me of being dictatorial. You would be saying that I'm using my power to shut you down and not allow you to speak or anyone speak on the items. So I have tried to be extremely careful and very fair across the board to let everyone speak. So my input has been very minimal when I do speak because I have to reject and I have to, you know, speak out against when facts are not true. And so the majority of the dialogue has been with YouTube council members that have come forward and consistently back and forth have to argue the point about anything. It could be as simple as, we're gonna put a light up in the park. And then you just beat it over the head and over the head, but I've allowed that to be fair with everybody and let everyone speak. I've even allowed people to come speak that have not been and wrote their name on the piece of paper to allow them to speak. Why? Because I want to make it fair for everybody.
I don't mean anything personal against you. I don't, but I'm speaking on behalf of everybody in here that's watching the clock tick by.
Okay, that's my whole point.
And I'm with Mr. Valverde. If we don't have a time limit, we're gonna be here till one o'clock in the morning, listening to your long speeches.
See.
And I don't mean personal, but every time you say something, it's fifteen minutes.
That was fifteen minutes.
You could have said something in ten minutes.
That was fifteen minutes.
Or two minutes.
This was just fifteen minutes.
Every time you open your mouth, it's a long, long, long drawdown.
You want to be disrespectful. That was disrespectful.
No, it's being honest. And if you call that disrespectful, that's fine.
I don't talk to you that way.
Okay? I'm, I'm telling you, I don't mean nothing.
No, but you did because I don't talk to you that way. I don't talk to anybody on this council.
But you're, you're, you're just drawing this out.
No, they are.
We need to.
And, and you yourself now have been included into that because it's just really scary what we're doing. Yes, go ahead. No, no, not, I recognize, okay? So did you want something else? Anybody else want on the council?
Motion to deny.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to deny. Do we have a second to the motion? Okay, we'll open it up again to discussion. I just want to say that be careful because this could be when you're trying to limit the conversation or anything of input from the community or anyone else on this council. Council, may you please chime in on this? Could be a violation of the First Amendment, the right to speak.
Well, I, I wanted to point out the policy that was raised earlier.
Right.
Specific provision says the mayor will encourage all council members to participate in council discussion and give each council member an opportunity to speak before any councillor can speak again on the same subject, basically giving everybody an opportunity. It also says, the mayor is responsible for keeping the meetings orderly by recognizing each council member for discussion, limiting speaking time, encouraging debate among council members and keeping discussion on the agenda item being considered. If the council feels that the mayor is being unfair by limiting some and not others, the ordinance specifically says, any council member may appeal to the council as a whole, a ruling by the mayor. If the appeal is seconded, the person making the appeal may make a brief statement and the mayor may explain his or her position. The mayor will then put the ruling to the vote of the council and the council decides. So a lot of what we're debating is already
Yeah.
in the policies as we currently speak.
And I would love to implement that because this way, I just don't want to be accused of being unfair. And I'm already being, so it's a damned if you do and a damned if you don't situation that I'm in because I'm trying to give everybody an opportunity to speak and carry their conversations and then I have my ability to put my input. And I don't want to be subjected to not being able to have that right to do so. So, okay, so we have a, a motion on the table to deny. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, so we don't have a second to the motion, then it lies, it dies for lack of a second. Thank you.
His motion does.
Yes.
There.
Do we have any other motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Valverde's suggestion to put a time limit and I'll, I'll go with the ten minutes for now, Mr. Valverde. To limit discussion to ten minutes unless it's approved further discussion by a majority of the city council.
And who is going to be the timekeeper for that?
I have a watch.
No, no, it'll have to be somebody that's not, that's unbiased. It'd have to be like.
City secretary. It would have to be the city's secretary.
Miss, I mean Sanchez, please. Maybe you could be the timekeeper on it and we can adhere to that ten minute rule. And so.
And just for clarification, this is ten minutes per?
I don't know.
Individual.
Whatever he wants to.
Per item.
Put on the items.
Ten minute limit per item.
Maximum ten minutes.
Unless approved by the, by the council for, for extend, to, for extended.
Well, purview to the rule that Mr. Garcia just read to us. We're gonna follow that rule to the line, to the limit. And we will follow that completely. So don't complain to me when I have to shut you down and tell you that we've reached, reached our minute and you don't have the time that you had before to speak as long as you wanted to.
With, with, with that in mind, that ten minutes should include the time that you speak.
It's subject to everybody, Mr. LaSaya. Do you see how you're singling me out? It's a perfect example of what we're all talking about.
You've been talking for the last twenty minutes.
There you go.
That's what we're trying to say.
I'm sure glad you're doing this. People see what's going on. Okay, so we have the vote. We, let's all in favor of Mr. Valverde. We already called it, correct? Mr. Valverde, vote.
Just for clarification, it's ten minutes per council discussion. Would that ten minutes include public input? Or is it just council debate?
What, what I mean here is like when we discuss an item on the agenda is ten minutes per agenda item and for us here.
For council discussion.
Yes.
So that doesn't include the.
Public, okay.
Public comment will be limited to the existing limitations.
Yeah, so. So discriminatory. Yeah. Yeah. It's posturing. It's posturing. That's all it is. It's wasting our time, wasting the city's time. Okay, let's move on.
You need to call for a vote, Mayor.
Yes, let's go ahead and call for a vote. Mr. Valverde?
Hi.
Mr. Sines?
Hi.
Councilman Sines, Councilman LaSaya? Councilman Sellers? And Councilman Burton? Okay, four to one, the motion carries with timelines, ten limits, ten minutes limit does not per, per item, correct? Can you make sure you write that out for me and I'll have it available? And then I'll, I'll remember. You can, as we move along, I'll try to remember.
Underwood, does that mean we can filibuster? Yep. I'm, y'all think that's funny?
No, no, I understand, I, I understand your question.
Point of order.
But again. Okay. Yeah.
So who's saying that? Don't point.
It's Mr.
Is, is, is such, you, you want him to fail. You're sitting here, you come to every meeting expecting him to fail. That's the only reason why you come up here. Oh, yes, you can, but don't, don't be.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor.
So that's, that's, Mr. Burton, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry that it occurred this way and I understand your feelings and emotional rollercoaster you're going through. It, it's tough. It's tough.
Councilman Burton, in response to your question, in, in response to your question, if the mayor recognizes you and there's the, but the possibility that you could speak for the entire ten minutes and the ten minutes would be taken, but the mayor could limit each council member during that time. It's just right now, the only rule is it's ten minutes per item of, of, or council discussion, it's limited to ten minutes. It will be up to the mayor per the current policy as to limiting each council member to, no, you're just gonna have two minutes each and so forth.
So what we passed just now, it really doesn't mean anything.
Well, it does limit ten minutes per item. So, but the mayor can say each one of you is going to get two minutes so that we don't surpass the ten minute per item.
Just summarize that for me in a, in a memo.
That's not what was voted on.
The, the person cannot speak more than ten minutes on the item.
So you're saying that it's, okay, that's not, that's why I asked the question. Is it ten minutes per individual or ten minutes per item? You said per item. So.
Okay.
So it's ten minutes per item what was approved.
Mr. Garcia, clarification. May I be recognized? Thank you. If somebody's attempting to filibuster, do city council members have a, a opportunity to vote to ask him to stop? Is that?
Mayor can ask the individual to stop or the mayor from the outset can set, you have a limit of two minutes because I have ten minutes per item. So each individual could be limited. But again, that's the presiding officer's decision. If someone is filibustering, you, another council member, but again, you have to be recognized and if somebody has a floor, you really cannot be recognized. That's the purpose of filibustering.
All right, thank you.
So you made a reputation.
Mayor, I don't have anything besides questions if there's any to our reports that were submitted. I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Your mic, Mayor. Your mic.
John, how, how are patrols coming along for us in the community? I know at one time we were short, so there was limited two patrols per, per shift. And now that you're almost fully staffed, how's that coming along for you or for us?
Nothing has changed for our residential. Residential has always been our primary focus. And then for any of the business owners, I, I don't like to say that they take a backseat, but residential is always our primary. So we create a residential and then we also have business patrols. We've seen our crime drop in our residential only because the officers overlap. We require them to conduct a certain amount of patrols through our residential. We encourage to them to stop and talk to our residents. It's unfortunate. I wish that we were, we had a perfect record. There is crimes that occurred. I know that Mr. Sines and I, we met a couple of weeks back where an individual failed to stop for, on a traffic stop. The officer we have onboard now, I, I'd like to say that they just keep themselves busy. So when they're, they're, if there's nothing that is being dispatched, they're running traffic, conducting traffic and doing patrols. So we have a pretty good police department right now and I think if someone had asked earlier if, how many officers we were at, we're just missing one, one more patrolman. We've received, I, I call it the tides, like the way the ocean comes in and out. We went through a very particular situation a couple of months back, probably in April. We had two out that were sick. We had one that went into our reserves and then, so we had three vacancies that were open. So it hindered our patrol abilities, I, I think as you were asking. But as far as functions, we move people around as far as essential personnel from investigations down to patrol because that's our, I say it lightly, our meat and potatoes. So we're never gonna take away services from patrol because that's our more, most important division. But we're missing one vacancy. We've received right now five applications for that vacancy. So it's, it's gonna be pretty hard to sift through the, the best qualified applicant. People want to work for our city.
How often do they patrol the community now, from the two down per day, per shift to where are we at now?
So the average between, for, on a, together, probably anywhere between four to about six patrols and that's a residential patrol through our, and then it's also seen on the, on the reports that y'all receive after the shifts, at the bottom left-hand corner, it breaks, breaks it down from residential patrols to business, business patrols to crime reports as well to our crime patrols. And.
And if I may make a suggestion, and it's a suggestion, it's not for you to order them or anything, but perhaps they can, want to increase their community policing in the neighborhood with the community. It's conducive to everybody. I think we'd like to get to know them and have them stop by and say hello every now and then to people and we, we want, we want to support them and be there. Let them know that we're there as well.
Yes, sir.
So it's not an order or anything like that, just a suggestion.
Sir, one of the biggest things that we did tonight, like presenting them, I know we haven't done in a while, but matching faces, especially for council, because we've noticed in years past that a new officer may not know who council member so is or the mayor or whoever it is. And when they take calls, they're, they're just like, not that they would give any type of special services, but just you have to know who you work for. And that's, that's a belief that I, so you know that person and know the city and all the logistics that come with it. That's one of our questions that we ask on our applications. You know, who's the current council? Give us some council members, the mall or Voda, I'm sorry. Voda. And just as far as former, current, past, any, anything having to do with our city to show us who's done research on us, our population, just little things like that.
It's just nice to see them wave every now and then and say hello.
Yes, sir.
They're passing by. One last thing I have and then I'll, anybody else have any questions? How is the dispatch coming along? I have not checked with you on it. We got the four chairs, right?
The, the chairs from the meeting, we were approved, I signed some paperwork, I sent it back to, I forget the gentleman's name, but it was with Bearment nine one one. Thank you for that. They approved four, five chairs. I think it came out to a little bit under six thousand dollars, but that's what they do. Apparently they give equipment over. Haven't heard from anybody else, but.
Would you like me to follow up with Mr. Brett Schneider?
I can follow up or if, I know you're busy.
I had left it in your purview and I remember I told you after I turned it over, you take it from there.
Yes, sir.
Because I think they were talking about four new workstations coming in.
Yes, sir.
We can put in there and they were gonna kind of reorganize, help us.
Yes, sir.
They were gonna give us some metal.
Some racks for, for the rooms.
And the new updated dispatcher equipment.
Too kind on the way we've wired through the years, right? So they said they could clean it, clean it up for us.
I'm so glad to hear that, that that's working out. Let me know if there's anything I need to do on my.
Yes, sir. No, appreciate it.
You go ahead and make communication, but if you need my assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. First of all, I appreciate what you did to have this stuff going. And Chief, I just wanted to say that looking at the reports to include the investigators, I see they stay busy. I see an increase in criminal and felony cases. I see one thousand five hundred and sixty-three business checks, nine hundred and eighty-eight crime prevention, two hundred and seventy-five residential patrols and four hundred and seventy-eight traffic stops and many more calls for a total of approximately five thousand calls for the month of June alone. I just want to thank you and your officers for taking care of this community. A lot of times we get so wrapped up in other things and forget to take time to say thank you. Please relay this message to your officers and that their work and efforts are, do not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Echo, echo what Mr. Valverde said. Thank, thank you for, for, for your support and everything that you guys do for us.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. Mayor, do we have a police officers appreciation day? Anytime during the year?
I think there is, right? Chief, we had a police officer appreciation day, coffee with the cops, all that, right? In the past, we've had it regularly throughout the year.
Multiple questions, I'll start with.
Okay.
So there, there is an assigned national police officer day that coincides with the police officer memorial. I believe that's right after dispatch week, which is April into May. And, and y'all have always been gracious enough to allow us to do something, at least lunch for one day for both departments. So thank you for that. A little bit goes a long way, you know, and so we like to do little things during the week for both departments. As far as with everything going on and then what we're coming from us in that particular position in April, where we had the tide either going out or in, more than likely probably be going out. We're in a good place right now. So we were doing Officer of the Month. We were doing different things like that. So it's something that we can just activate and bring it right back. So it's something that we can just activate and bring it right back now. So the officers just chose shifts again this past Friday, so we're actually putting them in the right places now and with realignment. Being that we're missing that one, he or her has no choice. You're at the bottom of the totem pole when you get to any organization, so you have no say, so that person will go tonight. So it's already set, and the chart is already set in place.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief, very much for everything. Oh, Mr. Burton, I'm so sorry.
I think it's time for a good old-fashioned staff, fire department, police department, softball game over.
About a golf game, too.
The person that came over, my Mr. Councilman Burton, was, so I got to get the guys in a little bit of shape before we go out there and we put them to that type of PT. They do great chasing suspects, but.
We're all.
Yeah, we got to take it as it is right now. Got a shape, that's just.
So with the tide theory, I just can't have anybody pull a hammy or get injured and have them out for.
No excuses.
All right, let's do a golf tournament, make it a little easier on them.
There you go. I hear you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, chief, very much for your report. Who would be next? Mr. Messick, or Mr. The Fire Chief? Yes. Welcome, chief, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I've submitted my monthly report in the packet, if anybody has any questions or.
You guys are doing a good job coming along with the inspections up. I was tracking the report, so just keep it up. Just let us know who's not complying with the fire and safety. Thank you.
Anybody else? We've had 496 for the year, right? Total calls on Cadian ambulance?
Actually, that number's been updated.
Has it?
Yes, because they had a, it took some time for me to get those numbers. I guess they had a hack in their computers, so they kind of were delayed on that, so I had already submitted my stuff before. So we're at 582 EMS calls, protocol's at 691.
Good.
I was just going to say, I've noticed that 100% of them were the apartments and no residential, right?
A good majority of them are.
Yeah, thank you.
Later, I'd like to get together with you and do the same thing that I helped the police department with. I met with some colleagues recently. We were discussing the fire department on possibly finding some extra funding for you, and I think I found it. I think I found a possible solution to where it will involve the dispatch as well, but it's going to provide you with some funds. And I'll gather the rest of the information for you, but it's going to be similar to what the police department got, but differently. But it's similar in that same concept. And so I think it's going to be a plus-plus for you. I'd like to share that with you later, see what you think. We'll kick it over and then bring it before the council and let them know about it. Okay, thank you, sir, for all you do for us. Hey, so any other department? Mr. Lada?
And I want to thank you, Mr. Lada, for sticking around with us for, over the time that you had already indicated that you might be, or you were going to be leaving. So thank you for all your hard work and this extra things that you're doing for it. Give us more time.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to bring up that wasn't in my report was that we received an email from CPS Energy. Unfortunately, it came real late on Friday, so we didn't get to act on it till today. But you can look on our website. Mary was so kind to put it on immediately. CPS Energy is going to have a public open house on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, at their main office, which is at 500 McCullough. And it's open to the community, and it's to talk about summer conservation, community investments. There's two sessions on that day, 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Again, this is their annual open house that allows the community to interact with CPS, to address any kind of topics of, like I said, billing assistance, rates 101, so they'll explain the rates to anybody who wants to have that. So again, if you know anybody, the constituents that may be interested, they can go to our website and look it up. And, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that I put that out, since we got that basically today. And then subject to anybody's questions on the report that I submitted.
Any questions for Mr. Lada?
No questions, comments. Mr. Lada, the mayor took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say that I have been wanting to thank you for extending your retirement due to help in, due to help our city until we find a replacement. But, you know, I'm sorry, I do have a question. How are we, how did we acquire those flesh-in stop signs?
Yeah, purchased them.
You purchased them?
Twelve of them.
Are they eventually going to be replaced?
No, no, we picked those two intersections, because I know we had some problems. I know at Glen Arm, there was just people speeding. Again, it's just to give people notice that there is a stop sign there. And those are, Chief, he gave us a suggestion for a gentleman, both at Hillcrest and there at.
Okay, all right. I was reading that the plumbing fixtures and the door locks were fixed at the Novak Park.
That is correct.
Were they vandalized, or had they been out of commission for a while?
They had been out of commission.
They've been, oh, okay.
So the folks that take the reservations, they get, once in a while, somebody will ask, hey, do the restrooms work? And so then we directed the staff to go check it out, and they got them up and running. And the key has now been provided to the police, so that way if somebody's using the ballpark and they want to use the restrooms, they can open up the restrooms.
Okay, so they're going to remain locked unless somebody.
Unless somebody requests them to be open.
That was my next.
Those will not be open automatically.
All right, that was my next question. Okay, sir, thank you.
Mr. Lada, now that we're a little bit settled in, is it possible that we start again on our code compliance meetings the way we were discussing up to about three months ago?
Well, I mean, we're still training the code officer. I mean, she's going to be going to class in August. So I would recommend that we give her some time to get some more seasoning under her belt and get her at least some more exposure to what's out there. Because again, she's getting slowly but surely getting exposed.
Okay, but that's fair enough. And I also wanted to comment on the stuff that she's been doing. I see she, I've seen her on Saturdays, so that's a good thing, so.
Yes, we are part of her responsibilities, pick one Saturday out of the month, and go driving around, making sure to see everybody is following the rules.
Thank you.
Our code ordinances.
Mr. Lada, on the, I guess oversight for Mr. Lisaea, to clarify for me, I don't know how that works or how that's working. Was he assigned a special duty to oversee the code compliance, or what is his position or role in that?
No, there was just a committee that was formed, and so we were meeting about once a month and go over what, feedback from council.
Committee chose him as the person, as a liaison.
It wasn't just him. Mr. Valverde was there as well, and the previous mayor would join in as well.
Great, thank you. We'll clarify that very much. Okay, anything? Anyone else? Mr. Messick, you want to close? Miss Delia? Miss Spence?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My finance report is part of the consent item. And so if there's anything you have a question of, I will say that I could talk for quite a while, but Delia says we have 10 minutes per item. Police chief took up 11 of that. The other thing I would add is that the county's numbers drop.
Yeah. We just got that today. I gave it to Gilbert.
Yeah, and so those numbers drop on the 22nd, a couple of days earlier. I'm busy calculating the voter approval rate and all those rates and everything. But more importantly, the county will do it for us, too, so in case I mess it up. But that's coming, and just in time for August 5th, I believe that's Monday night at 6, will be our next budget workshop. Otherwise, if you have any questions.
Great. I was really happy to see that letter that provided Mr. Peralas earlier. It was in my mailbox today, and I read it, and it's from the comptroller, from the fair appraisal. So that was good news.
Real quick comment from me. Again, appreciate you taking the time, you and Mr. Peralas, taking the time and helping me go through the agenda items and understanding that the numbers, thank you very much, it's very helpful. Mr. Peralas, awesome with the way you're able to explain and help me get through the things I need to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Councilman Sellers.
I got an email that we've received, an application for a city administrator position. Is that application going to be, or is that application going to be brought to the city council? Anytime soon?
That's not an agenda item, so. No, but yeah, so I guess we can't discuss it. Right, yeah. We can't discuss it. Okay, thank, okay. Yeah, I received the same email, so, yeah. They got sent all this. Okay, alrighty. If that includes the reports from each department, and we have nothing else, we'll move on now to item number 14, and announcement, comments, and requests. So the announcement comments by the mayor and other council members, do we have any announcements by any of the council members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Valverde?
I have an announcement about the Veterans Day event. The Veterans Day event will be here in approximately three and a half months. I would like to have a meeting with the mayor, city administrator, Mrs. Spence, Mr. Gillian. Mr. Gillian is the chairman. And anyone else interested in being in the committee sometime in August. I will present an AAR, After Action Report, from the last event. And we need to discuss the future of this event and the impact of our budget. So I'll be sending out an email to anyone that's interested to join the committee, to see if we're going to continue it or stop it or what, because of our revenue situation.
Okay.
But I do have an after-action report that I need to put out to the committee members. And of course, half of them are gone. I think it's just myself, Lamar, and Mr. Gillian and Mrs. Spence right now.
Anyone else? Council members, Councilmen Sellers?
And this is to be placed on a future agenda, right? It's what we're discussing here now? No?
Yeah.
Just announcements. Okay, well.
It'd be number 16, and where you can bring that up.
All right, 16, okay.
One more.
Well, I have an announcement. Is it, is it true that Senator Benitez has leased more office space at Wonderland Mall?
He's requested additional space, right? I think he sent everybody an email or a letter, requested additional space. Apparently, the committee's going to be growing. But I was going to do that on my report, so you don't mind.
Yeah, I had to say something. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements or comments of the council members? So I just want to say that the Jazz Fest was a success. It was really nice. Thank Mary Spence, she put a lot of hard work into it. Everyone that I'm not aware of that was involved, thank you. That was a success, considering that Mr. Stossing almost brought it all the way up to the home plate, and then y'all carried it over. So that was great. The music was fantastic. Weather was hot. I think the best part about it is I saw the kids dancing out in the, in the, you know, stage, out in the front of the stage. And I think everyone had a good time. There was a good turnout. And so that is the other thing. Councilman Burton and I, and Mr. Councilman Sellers, attended the TML Conference, and we completed our Open Meetings Act training, among other rules and regulations pertaining to municipalities. It was a really great educational event. Wouldn't you agree, guys? Really was eye-opening. Even if you've been on city council before and a mayor before, I encourage y'all to take that course or take, get in, go to the TML training for that, even if you've already been on the council, because it's always new. Something's coming up. You can ask questions, and you can really engage with, and you can hear. The most interesting part about it is that we were hearing almost the same exact things that are going on in this city that other cities are experiencing as well. And one of the things that one of the presenters, Mr. Tito Rodriguez, who's a dear friend of mine, was saying, and the others were saying, is that what did you have in mind when you got involved in office? It's a thankless job. It requires a thick skin, and is just something that most people will not get involved with, but we did. And so they were really like telling us that it was a great thing for us to be involved in serving our communities, and to take that abuse is what they called it. But yeah, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to report that and let you know that it was a wonderful event. So thank you for the cities for sending us to that. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so we now will move into the announcements by our city administrator.
Couple of things. One is the senator submitted a request for the additional spaces being vacated by economic development. And if you all are in agreement, then if you can give me the authority to just, or the consensus to move forward with negotiating the second part. Remember, that's rent that comes directly to the city, doesn't go to Wonderland. So it'll be additional funding. Right now, I believe they, their rent is close to about $40,000 a year. Yeah, and so the additional space will add a little bit more to that.
And put the most important part in there. When we got that notice, I was the first one that came, said, you can have that office.
Yeah.
Because originally they were going to, it had been recommended.
I was about to.
Ask me about.
If I may.
Yes.
I was about to commend the mayor for allowing Senator to take the mayor's office over there.
Yeah, I jumped on it. I said, hey, that's more revenue for our city.
You know, if that's more revenue for us, that's good.
Yeah.
I want to thank the mayor for that.
Not important to me.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sellers. I'm glad I was able to do that.
So if y'all are good, then I'll move forward with negotiating.
Okay, and he was very appreciative of us doing that. No, that's just an item, an announcement by the city administrator. Anything else, Mr. Peralas? Okay, Councilman Burton?
He's getting the rental. Is he getting the furniture? Because I know Balcony's bought that furniture.
You pay for it, don't you? Nothing's free.
So we'll negotiate. Everything's negotiable.
It is negotiable. Even the coffee cups.
And what is it, the, don't we have a fish tank in there and all that? Hasta los, oh, well, let me say.
Yeah, I don't think he wants it.
As to the fish, in the Spanish, es hasta los peces, meaning that, until even the fish.
We've got one other thing, and in reference to the resume that you received, we did get four responses for the request or proposal for executive search firm. And I'll get that information out to you guys. So the process will be that I'll give you the information, and you all need to sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
At some point, so.
I think the sooner the better.
So I'll give you the names and just a sketch of what it is, but then you'll get all the documents. And remember that these documents have proprietary information, so I'll probably take some of that stuff out. But then you can have it, and then you can decide what the next step is, whether you bring somebody in for interviews or not. So the price quotes range from $18,000 to $55,000. And that's just four, four responses. So just so you get a taste of what to expect.
Yeah, 18K is about average, is where it starts.
Yeah, so, and they're all legitimate, so. But I'll get that information to you as soon as I can get something together, at least so you can get a flavor for it. You need to start thinking about maybe a committee or all of you getting together to call those out and then decide which direction you want to go in.
And according to that TML guideline they gave us as well, right?
Well, at this point, it's selecting the search firm.
Okay.
And then if you go with the lowest-priced one, they're a good one. They're just new.
Okay.
And they're trying to get more business, but if you choose that, then at that point, whatever the TML guidelines say is something you can talk to them. But all that is included in the RFP, and their responses reflect that information, so.
Great. I'm glad I didn't put that on the agenda. I was going to put the item for discussion about that, get a report back. I'm glad you brought that to our attention in your remarks right now. Thank you. Anything else?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes. Guess who?
Did I ask the city administrator a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Valverde.
Okay, Mr. Peralas, I was just wondering, what was the status on the property on Elget?
That was the other thing.
Do you have anything to say about that? So the status is that they're real close to closing. So as soon as we get something, as soon as I get a check, I'll deliver it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? All right, so let's go ahead and close that out now of the announcements, comments and requests. And we will now be moving into the executive session. The time is?
Number sixteen.
I'm sorry, would I miss one? Sixteen, that's what David wanted. Yes, agenda item request by mayor and council members to place on the future city council agenda. Mr. Sellers?
I wanna bring to everybody's attention and perhaps some action taken on the property lines for the car wash up here where the butts the apartments, they have a steep rock slide. And those rocks keep rolling down almost into the parking lot of the apartments. And I want, if possible, something, some kind of retaining wall or a fence or something to stop that. And I want that on the agenda. That's all I have.
Hey, did we understand what he said?
I know what he's talking about and I've seen the berm that they built there. It's actually a civil matter and they are discussing, the two property owners are discussing that. And I just assume leave it as a civil matter, because I don't know that we can do anything about it at this point. But my suggestion is let us continue to work with the property owners to make sure they find a resolution. Because there's also some issues about whether or not the apartment complex has encroached on their property. So I don't, the city doesn't get involved in that, it's just a civil matter at this point. So any settlement will be taken care of by both parties. And I would suggest at this point that we do nothing until we wait to see what happens.
So what I understand you to be saying is that when the blueprints for the car wash were submitted to the code compliance officer and the staff, they failed to foresee that flaw and address that situation then.
So remember that we only, when the request was made for the development, only one set of blueprints come in, and that's the owner of the property. Once they started building, there was an encroachment by the other party, that's not part of the submittal. So we have no clue about what's going, we only approve what the development is. And they work within the guidelines that establish boundaries, we don't. And so we approve the construction, we approve the material, we approve all that. And so right now, there is an issue between both parties that is civil at this point. And I don't know that we could step in at this point to do anything except help them continue the conversation, the discussion, until they find a resolution.
Okay. All right, I was just under the impression that the blueprints were submitted for approval and they were supposed to have thoroughly looked at it and caught that.
Because, so the submittal was for the construction of the existing project, not the existing?
I know, I know, and I'm probably just rattling on, but when I put my driveway in at the house, I submitted the blueprints and things were overlooked by the fault of Balcony Heights. And they came by to my house and wrote it off because it was their fault. They failed to look at it thoroughly and I thought that applied to the car wash too. I mean, if there was something they should have caught then and failed to do so, but.
It's okay. Anyone else? So I just wanna mention, I don't, there's no need to to take, I mean rather to place on the agenda or anything, but if you can just please check on what we discussed in the very beginning when I became mayor, looking at the beautification of the city, that lot that is still now back to its old eyesore again, yeah, Norma's restaurant, it's really looking bad and it's just tough for potential investors that are cruising through our city and others that, you know, give a bad impression of the condition of our city. Yeah, so if you can go back and just revisit that again, please, at your convenience and stay on top. So that's it, I think that's all we have, anything else? Okay, so now we'll go ahead and close this, we will close the meeting, it's nine thirty-nine PM and we will be going into executive session. Do I need to read the item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on.
So do I need to read the item, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
Both items that we're gonna go.
Executive session number seventeen, discussion pursuant to five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four Personnel Matters Regarding Complaint Filed by Mayor Johnny Rodriguez Against Councilman Juan Lysia Jr. Do I go to number eighteen as well?
Correct.
Eighteen, discussion pursuant to five-five-one-oh-seven-four Personnel Matters Pertaining to City Administrator Gilbert Peralis to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or an employee.
And Mayor, at this time, since it's a complaint against a council member and also regarding Mr. Pedales, both have the option as to whether they want it in closed session or open session, so it's probably now to ask them whether they want it in open.
And I put that language in the actual.
Right.
To put on the agenda, so the first one would be against Councilman Juan Lysia, would you like this to be an open session or executive session?
I would like to do it in an open session after recess, though. A brief recess.
Okay, so you wanna take a recess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody okay with a recess? Okay, and a recess is fine, the time is.
Do you wanna get on the record whether Mr. Pedales wants it in open or closed?
Mr. Pedales, would you also like to go in open session or are you gonna be in closed session? Okay, so the time is nine forty-one PM. So discussion pursuant to five-five-one-oh-seven-four Personnel Matters Regarding Complaint Filed by Mayor Johnny Rodriguez Against Councilman Juan Lysia Jr. Mr. Councilman Lysia has opted to discuss this in public session, Mr. Lysia, you have the floor. Okay.
I don't know what we're discussing, okay, thank you.
So this stemmed from a situation that I was extremely reluctant to bring forward to the city council, extremely, because it involves two employees of ours that were witnesses and overheard and heard what happened, and I didn't wanna put them and subject them to this process. I had had several conversations with our council, Mr. Garza, regarding this, as to how to approach it, how to approach it. I also conveyed to him my concerns about what it would do to our city if I was to do something like this and how I stressed to him that I was trying to avoid any bad negative publicity for our community. And so I, when Mr. Lysia placed the items that he placed on the agenda for this council meeting and the other items that were placed prompted me that it was the right time and trust me, I had to pray about this very hard as to whether I should do this or not, because it was a difficult decision, this is not something I wanna do and for the sake of our city. And I tried to avoid it as much as possible. And it was nights of, I wasn't able to sleep sometimes thinking about it over and over and over as to what should I do? How should I lead here, how should I lead by example? And so I refrained from putting it on the agenda. I refrained from bringing this before the council or going any further in legal action as far as that's concerned. And so when my hand had been pushed and I was backed up into a wall and these items were placed on the agenda pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor, after I had read the old version of what I have on hand, I realized that I would be remiss in my responsibilities as mayor, is it it provides the language in there for me to present this to the council. So again, had I not done it and had not brought it to the attention when the timing was right and when it was brought to me now at this meeting, that was when I acted upon it and I put it on the agenda. So that I would not be remiss in my duties in the local government code in providing this knowledge to the council to examine and take a look at what happened. So in this, I'm going to I'm gonna read what I wrote to Mr. Lysia in my letter of complaint. For the sake of the people here and for the sake of the people in the community that is looking at this on the video that is gonna be streamed, I'm going to resort not to utilize the curse word that he used, but I'm gonna use the two letters of the word so that everyone will understand and they know what it means. So I wrote to Mr. Lysia on July seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Dear Mr. Juan Lysia Jr., I am writing to bring your attention a distressing incident that occurred on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which has prompted me to file an official complaint against you. During a city council meeting recess in the hallway adjacent to the Balcony Heights City Council Chambers and in close proximity to the Community Development Office, you committed an act of disorderly conduct in a city building by directing loud and decent profane and vulgar language, including the phrase FU towards me. This verbal altercation took place with an aggressive, threatening manner by what I perceived as a threat of immediate bodily harm as you rapidly walked towards me in a threatening manner, placing your face and body within a few inches from my face and body, impeding my ability to move and causing me to believe that you were gonna physically assault. It is deeply concerning that such behavior occurred within the premises of a city building, reflecting poorly on the lack of professionalism, decorum, and self expected, self-control expected in such environments and an immediate breach of the peace. Notably, two city employers were within earshot and witnessed heard the loud, profane verbal altercation firsthand, further underscoring the severity of this situation. As a result of this incident, I have initiated formal proceedings and the matter is scheduled for discussion at the regular city council meeting July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at six PM. The city attorney has confirmed that this matter can be addressed in executive session outlined in five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four Personnel Matters of the relevant legal code. This affords you the opportunity to provide a written response before the council meeting, should you wish to do so. It is important to know that you have the option to request that this discussion take place in open session, in which case it will be held publicly. End of letter to Mr. Lysia from me. So again, it was distressing. I did report it and I made it aware briefly to Mr. Sines. I did, right after that occurred, I came out of that and I talked to the two witnesses that were there. And for the sake of their identity, until this does not get resolved, whatever gets resolved over this, I don't wanna subject them to it until the necessary time is appropriate for them to come forward. I prefer that they not get interjected into this situation, but unfortunately, I may not have a choice in the event that I need to prove up my allegations that I'm making. And so I had talked to both witnesses seconds after this occurred and I asked them if they heard what he said and using the FU and they said, yes, we did. And I apologized profusely to each one, saying that I am really sorry that this is not the way I want things to occur in my very, very first meeting, taking office and taking oath in office. And it was extremely disturbing to me and I was sorry to them for that occurring, that they had to hear that. And so after that, I walked away and I said, I hope that I can fix things and we will not allow this to happen again. And so I followed through and then after a break or right after the meeting and I mentioned it to Chief John Ahara and I told him that I did not want to take action at the time on filing any type of criminal complaint and that I was gonna be taking an inner advisement and again, looking out for the sake of the city and the image that would be projected as a result of doing this. And this is one of the other reasons I wanted to do this in executive session. Because again, as I mentioned earlier in the previous meeting, these are the kind of things that are very disturbing and can cause investors to not visit our city or possible investment because of this inner bickering and this problem that occurred. And I know that I did call Mr. Lysia spineless, but it's nowhere near the language that should result from that for the FU words in a very light manner, that is, there's no comparison to those languages. You know, the reason I had called Mr. Lysia spineless is because he walked away from me when I was trying to talk to him and I felt that he was not wanting to continue in the dialogue in which I had asked him to please be careful not to discuss these things in an open forum like that, especially the first meeting that we had, that if there was a way we could find to talk in private and discuss these things and his reaction was negative and it was more like, I'm gonna do whatever I'm gonna do and I know what I need to do and that was it. And so that, when he walked away from me saying that, that's when I prompted and I called him spineless. So nevertheless, the FU word was very serious, the intimidating manner in which you approached me with your finch clenched, like you were gonna do something, you got in front of my face. And and so therefore, the perception by me was that you were gonna do something that was gonna be physical in nature and I was going to possibly defend myself or have to defend myself and I was just really, really distraught that that kind of behavior occurs in a city building. And so here we are. I was hoping we would do this in executive session, so Mr. Lysia, if you would like to respond, you may respond at this moment.
Thank you for giving your version of the incident. First, first of all, part of your opening statement, you said it's not personal, but yet you wait till you see a document and then you file. So to me, that's pretty obvious that it's personal. First, second, you mentioned spineless. The term spineless you initiated the Saturday before the election when I told you that I would not remove Suzanne De Leon's sign from my yard. At that same incident, I had to ask you to leave my property because I was not gonna tolerate what you were doing. Just so we can frame this up, so we can get the full picture of what has happened. Okay, now I'm gonna go into my thing. This complaint is skewed by omission of several important facts that may help frame the true sequence of events. I ask that I may be allowed to finish before having any interruptions. In the first meeting after the mayor's long-winded speech into which he formally announced the shortcomings of the previous mayor, city council, police, including the city administrator and openly declaring himself the CEO of the city, I proceeded to clarify his statement. I corrected his version of the city's administration and informed the audience that in the city of Balcony Heights, the mayor's position is simply ceremonial by authority of managing city council meetings, meet with organizations and individuals regarding city information, but not committing the city without city council approval. The mayor also represents the city during ribbon cutting events. Additionally, except for instances only when four of the voting members are present, the mayor may cast a vote to break the tie. I also clarified, the city administrator, not the mayor, was in charge of the day-to-day administration of the operation. During the recess, I exited the council chambers en route to the bathroom by means of utilizing the exit at the rear of the chamber. While en route to the bathroom, I heard, Mr. Lysia, Mr. Lysia, Juan. To my surprise, it was the mayor. As the mayor aggressively approached me, he starts by raising his voice and pointing his finger and saying, don't you dare ever confront me in front of my people again. At this point, I crossed my arms, knowing of the mayor's tendencies of creating volatile situations and letter claiming to be the victim, specifically against women, which I have noticed, which I have witnessed on more than one occasion. He also he also did not disclose in his complaint that he told me that I had to follow his lead. He was always right and did not back down. I told him no one interfered with my voting. And I vote, I was voted by the people and for the people. He stated, let's see if you are here next year. I have the power if you are voted in next year. At this point. Oh, you say you don't want people to laugh, but you're laughing.
No.
At this point, I told him if this is how you operate. F U and the horse you rode in. He kept haunting me and I told him I was not going any further and I walked away. It is with great concern that I plead to the council that we monitor the actions of the mayor. I believe this situation shows a true character of the mayor. And illustrates the measures he will take if anyone disagrees with him. He has already demonstrated this type of behavior to staff and committee members that most of us have witnessed. I am also sure in the near future, we will have another situation. That will pertain to someone not agreeing with him or not allowing to do as he wishes. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to clarify what has transpired. And illustrate. Who was the aggressor and the unprofessional one? In this situation. I would like to close with a quote by Anthony Gucciardi. I have a lot of respect for genuine people. They may not be perfect, but at least they do not pretend to be. Thank you.
So if I may retort. I don't know.
Do we allow for back and forth?
Of course, yeah. Of course I have. Yeah. Yeah, exactly, but but I I I'd like to to. I don't know how to put this and I'm going to pray, I prayed just now. To um. The Lord grant me the wisdom on how to how to reply to this. There is no other way that I can reply other than just saying, Mr. Lysia. I cannot believe how much of a liar you are. None of that took place. I never used the word F. I never said any of those things to you. I never pointed my finger at you. And you are lying to your teeth. And I am telling you right now. That that is not the truth and you know it's not the truth. But you've taken the choice. To uh purge yourself. In saying this in a in a meeting. And. I just think that it's it's just very, very bad and embarrassing that. We have to go through this. I would never do that to you. I would never do that to anybody. I do not speak that way. I do not curse at people. I respect other people. I'm firm. And I will speak to you in in educated words. But I will never use profane language to you or anyone else. And you ask anyone that has had any interactions with me. That I have never been that way with them, no matter how angry I get or how much I disagree with a person. I would never, and I have never done that to anybody. And I will tell you that anyone will attest to that to you. Now. What is puzzling to me. And and this occurs in a lot of cases, civil and criminal as well. In which the person that's being accused will misdirect people. By you saying the things that you said regarding skewed um important uh facts. Long-winded statement about the powers and duties of the mayor. And you're not sticking. To the original complaint that is made against you, sir. Did you or did you not curse at me and say the F U word to me and came to my face? With a threatening manner to assault me? Now, did you or did you not do that, sir?
Where 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 did this happen?
It's happened right here, right close to the door of Mr. I'm not even going to mention his name. Right here, close to this employee that has an office right here that heard it. And there was another person in there at the time that heard it as well. That's how clear it was and how loud it was. Are you denying that you did that?
Did that happen on the dais?
You're not answering the question.
Neither you. Did that happen on the dais?
Sir.
Man, and what and what what I want to know is.
You know where it happened, Mr.
What I want to know is if you are going to act this way and take offense anytime I see you anywhere. Outside of the dais.
Sir.
What do you want me to do?
Sir.
I am asking you, did this happen on the dais?
Say it, don't change the narrative. You committed an act of cursing in a public place. Now, are you going to admit to it? Are you going to continue to lie to the public? And everyone here by sidestepping the question? And bringing up all this other stuff that's not really relevant. Forget about the fact that I may have done what I did in the council meeting. No matter if I spoke about whether the powers and duties were mine here, we got into that debate. Forget about all that. Stick to the relevant question of this complaint. Did you or did you not do that? Right behind here after the council meeting.
I defended myself.
Or not say that F word.
I defended myself. When I felt I was being oppressed by an official, an elected official. By telling me that I had to follow the lead. I did defend myself.
No, sir, you're not answering the question. The question here at question is whether you use the F U word to me in the back of this room. And confronted me in a threatening manner. That's the question to pose right now. And you're not answering the question. You're dancing around it. Don't dance around it and play games with the people. These people's time is valuable. They want to go home. I want to go home. And I'm tired of this type type of activity. I'm going to expose you for what you are and you are a liar, sir. You are an outright liar and you fabricated that statement. To make it to your favor and flipping it to say that I said that. And I guarantee you the other two witnesses that were present did not hear me use that kind of language.
And I and I think you're confused because nowhere in my narrative did I say you said anything. I think you're so upset and so confused. I never said anything about you using profanity. I don't know where I don't know where you got that.
You said that I said F U to you and I tell you, you're not going to tell me F U anything.
May I have a response from the audience that that?
Did you curse at me and say F U to me in a public place in the back? Did you approach me in a threatening?
I have already told you that I defended myself.
Okay.
When you attempted to physically oppress me by telling me how I had to vote.
No, sir, I did not, and that's an outright lie. I'm calling you that because you are a liar.
And and that's what you do every time you're confronted by anyone or anything. And 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 like like I go back and say. And I'm going to read one of my statements again. It is great with it is with great concern that I plead to the council that we monitor the actions of the mayor. I believe this situation shows the true character. And illustrates the measures the mayor will take if anyone disagrees with him.
But that's not the question that was presented in the complaint. You're not answering the question of the formal letter of complaint to you and you're dancing around it. You're not telling the truth.
Mayor, he did respond.
I believe he has answered that question.
He did respond to your allegations in his statement.
Did he say that I didn't say F U to you?
No, no.
Sellers, please.
Yes.
I'm talking to the 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 counselor, okay? Thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
In in my understanding of the statement that I heard him read. He did not ever accuse you of using the F U word.
Okay, so let's that's a moot point.
But he did, he did, he did state in response to what he felt was a threatening manner, he did say. F U and the horse you rode in. He did admit. To saying that.
Okay, he didn't tell me the horse you rode on. He just said.
I'm just saying that's what he said in his statement.
Right.
I'm just saying that's what he read in his statement in his response now. I don't know how the council plans to proceed. Because just to let the council know. If whether you believe one or the other, council does not have the authority to remove any council member.
I just am doing my duty as mayor. To present it to the council. So they can see the conduct of Mr. Lysia.
And and he responded and now it's up to each council member to interpret your statement and his response.
Right, and the fact is this. Is that? I think we're beating a dead horse here. I've already made the complaint. I brought up what he said. He is. Now you're telling me he has admitted to saying F U. So then what I'm saying is that no matter what action took place before that. Or anything after that. Are you condoning? That an individual can use that kind of a language in a public place? And not have any 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 uh 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 any problems after that? In other words, there can nothing that can be done about it? So then I can start cursing at people and I can start using the F word against somebody and the council is not going to do anything about it? Is that what you're saying? Because if it is. Then you better think about what you're doing. Because that's not right. Within the law or within civil laws. You're not supposed to do that.
Okay.
And so your allegations that I said anything or was oppressive to you is not true, sir. That was not true. I did not tell you that. I didn't tell you to change your vote or how you vote or anything. I would never do that.
You told me I had to follow your lead and you were in charge and you would see and I would get elected. Anyway, we're 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 going to beat the dead dead horse.
You are.
You you have already admitted that this is a personal thing because you initiated after you saw something on the agenda. So there there's nothing else to 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 discuss.
It's not a personal thing.
Thank you for granting me the opportunity. Let's move forward. I hope after this we can learn to agree to disagree because we've got a time to work. So you're saying you're not willing to work?
No, not with that kind of.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So as 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 we move forward, as we move forward, I am willing to put this behind me. Work as a professional that I am, defend myself when I have to, and I will move forward. Thank you. I don't have anything else to say.
Do you want to chime in? Did you want to call some or you did? Mr. Sellers?
You know, when I when this came up on the agenda. I uh got on my computer and I spent some time. Researching the definition of disturbing the peace. Uh I wanted to. See if you had some kind of defense here. Mayor Rodriguez. Definition disturbing the peace.
Disorderly conduct.
Also known breach of the peace. Is a criminal offense that occurs when a person engages in some form of unruly public behavior. Such as fighting or causing unreasonable noise. The key word there is public. Uh. And then we're talking about fighting words. Uh R A R A V versus city of Saint Paul nineteen ninety-two. The Supreme Court found that the First Amendment prevents government from punishing speech and expressive conduct. Because it disapproves of the ideas expressed. Even if the words are considered to be fighting words, the First Amendment will still protect the speech. If the speech is restricted, it is based on viewpoint discrimination. Defenses. To disturbing the peace. The hit the behavior was not disruptive enough. The behavior was provoked by others. The behavior did not actually disturb anybody. The behavior was in self-defense. And. That's what I found uh, you know. I don't know that. Punishment can be. Inflicted here.
And I'm not asking for punishment.
You brought it to the attention. Excuse me, you brought it to the attention of the city council and the staff. Um and there is not going to be. Uh an apology by either party. Uh that's obvious. And I I just feel like this should be resolved. As is now. And with that, I'll yield.
Okay, so just in in clarifying disorderly conduct, a person commits an offense under section forty-two oh one in Texas law. Uses abusive, indecent, profane or vulgar language in a public place. And the language by its very utterance tends to incite an immediate breach of the peace. Okay, two other individuals are involved now. Okay? All right, so that did occur. Now, I'm not asking you to take any type of other action. As just to say that this behavior should not be condoned. It should not be excused and it should never allow to be and ever occur again like that.
If I may, Mayor.
That's what, not what I did or what I said in the council meeting or anything like that. It is the offense of what occurred at the time that it occurred to me. That's what I am complaining about. And how would you like it if I did that to you? How would you like it if I cursed at you? Would you allow me to get away with it? No, you would be right away putting the law in effect to me because I'm the mayor and because. You want to do this to me because you have a personal vendetta against me.
Mayor, the 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 First Amendment to the Constitution states you could say any cuss word you want anywhere you want.
No, sir, you can't.
And there is there is no. Punishment.
No, sir, you cannot do that. Anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, so.
Signs.
This recalls a conversation that you and I had a couple of weeks ago at the Woda meeting. I immediately prior to you and I adjourned ourselves to a hallway immediately before the meeting. And I thought what we I thought we had what was a. I'm sorry, did that not occur?
No, I'm I'm looking at the time and I'm thinking how late it is. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um. I thought we had a productive conversation where you address or you stated that you wanted to mend relationships with Mr. Lysia. And you wanted to be able to work together as a city council and mayor to uh progress ideas for the city. I agreed with you. And I do think that we need to work together as a as a city council and mayor. Um you expressed to me that you thought Mr. Lysia should apologize to you. Um you also stated that. Your nature is. If you feel like you're being personally attacked, that you will escalate.
I would defend myself.
You said escalate. Um so.
I will never trust you again, Mr. Signs, because I I trusted to talk to you. That's not what I said, but go ahead and change my words.
All right, so and. When we had this conversation, I said, well. If you're escalating against somebody, their natural response is to escalate for them to escalate as well. And I said for you to mend those fences. That the best thing for you to do at that time would be to apologize to Mr. Lysia, be the bigger man. Apologize to him for number one, as you said. Mr. Lysia was walking away. He was down the hall away from you. You called out for him. And approached him. And then.
Respectfully.
I I.
You weren't there.
I will, you did uh. You did admit you called him spineless, a spineless coward.
I told you I did.
Yes, you admitted that. I don't think that's.
Spineless coward. I said he was spineless.
Okay, so calling someone spineless is something that's going to start bringing a rise out and they're going to get defensive and they may escalate, right? So. Juan reacted and I told him that night that that was inappropriate, what he said. I said, you should probably shouldn't have replied that way, but. Regardless, he did, but the the fact of the matter is he was trying to walk away multiple times, right? So he walked away down. Yes, this is according to your your narrative. He walked away down the hall. He was trying to use the restroom. As you were. Discussing. What was said, what was not said, that's he said, he said, kind of thing. But. He turned and tried to walk away again and that's when you called him spineless. That's according to your narrative that was in your letter. So. He was trying to disengage multiple times, but you kept on engaging and kept on escalating towards him. Natural response is to to continue to escalate. So there are two wrongs in this situation. You were wrong and Mr. Lysia was wrong.
So it constitutes accepting F U.
I never said that.
No, I'm asking you.
No, I'm saying there are two wrongs here.
Okay, but. Answer the question. Is F U acceptable?
I just said it was wrong. I said.
Is it acceptable?
I said it's wrong.
Okay. So you're not gonna, you won't hold anybody accountable for doing that. So again, let me say as an example.
I'm sorry, how would you like us to hold him accountable if you're telling us that you don't want us to hold him accountable?
Language to you. Would you stand for it? Or would you file a complaint against me and try to have me? Get in trouble for it?
Juan, honestly, I don't care what your opinion of me is.
Yeah, but if I was to do that in a public place, sir, and I did the F U where employers are there. And they hear that. As a sign of of. Where he says the F word.
Would I file a formal complaint?
That's right.
Would I file a formal complaint? No, I would not, and I would not involve the police because I do not care.
Yeah.
Personally.
Okay.
Of your opinion of me.
Okay. All right.
So how do we unring the bell?
All I was just bringing it to the attention of the city council. In accordance to the rules that promulgate me to do so. That's it.
But you're also.
Because I knew I knew already putting it on the agenda. That nothing was going to be done about it, neither this or the next item on the agenda.
But you're contradicting yourself, Mayor. You're saying that you want us to take action against Mr. Lysia because we can't condone that language. But then you're also saying that you don't want us.
No, but let me let me reclarify that because see you're playing with words. And you're killing time again.
No, I'm 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 asking you to clarify because in one game, in one sentence, in one sentence, you say we need to hold him accountable and then the second sentence, you say. I'm not asking you all to do anything.
What I'm trying to do is end this thing because I already know it's going to go nowhere. And I knew it when I brought it to the to the to the council meeting to begin with, but I wanted my opportunity. To be able to present the facts as they were. Okay, now whether you believe them or not is irrelevant to me at this point now because I already knew you're not going to do anything about it. You're all in an organized opposition. It's clear. People can see it. They're going to see it in this meeting. They're going to see it in this video. It's clear. You guys from day one before I even took office. You guys from day one before I even took office were against me. You worked against me. And you did not like me and you still don't like me. And you are sacrificing the city. You're sacrificing the city's affairs for your own personal political agenda. And it's clear. Watch how you vote. Look how you act. You're all in organized opposition. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that, sir. You know, it does not take a rocket scientist to see that. And it's it's a shame and it's shameless that y'all have to act that way. Because I don't act that way. Yeah, I may be a little forceful and I may say some things that I feel the way I do like I'm doing right now. But I do it in response because I'm aggravated and I'm antagonized over it. That's why. Because I know what you guys are doing and everyone else knows what you're doing. It's shameless and you have your family involved doing it and everybody else doing it, you know, and it's shameless. It's shameless. It needs to stop. Okay, so all I did was bring it before the city council. So that I have put it on the agenda to make it a matter of record.
I'm I'm sorry.
In an open forum, Mr. Lysa. So that you can air this laundry out and people can see all of this. So that you can stand up and say, oh, I care about the city so much. And I really love my city and I'm doing this because I'm trying to help my city. Well, you're not helping it, sir, by doing this. We could have done this in executive session with all this embarrassment unnecessary.
So I'm sorry you feel that way, but again, many of the things that you've brought up have been. Un not proved or denied or tabled by votes of five oh, five oh, or four one.
That's not.
So it's not organized opposition. It is requesting additional information, as I told you in our hallway meeting that if you provide us the information we need upfront, we can make informed decisions.
Need to do your own research. That's not my responsibility. If you as a councilman, you do your research like you should have done it with them all. When not you, but personally, but the other council members, it should have been done. And you relied on other individuals and got us in trouble. And we're in a situation because of that. So let's not get off track. Uh, no, there can be no public comment, Mr. Herbert. I'm so sorry. I apologize, but we can't have any public comment. Correct, Mr. Garza? So let's wrap it up, guys. I already see nothing's gonna be done. I already knew it. Brought it before the council so that it gets in public form. It is now a matter of public record. And that's all I wanted to achieve is bring it before a matter of public record. Well, council and burden, please. Go ahead, sir. Do you want something, Mr. Sellers?
I I just wanted to say that. You know, it's fourteen years of my working career as a foreman. Running employees on a job. There wasn't a week that went by that one of those employees told me fuck you. Every week. I never fired him. I never was insulted by it. I did my job to the best of my abilities and carried on. And it seems to me that the only. Thing you're you're concerned about, the only thing that bothers you is the F word that he said to you. And I, after reading your or listening to your uh, statement and his statement. I feel like. Uh, Mark said there there's two wrongs here and and. Just let it go. Just let it go and move on to the next item.
I would like to make a motion to.
There's no need for action in this right now.
I'm just wanting to end debate.
This is just.
I just want in discussion on this.
This is right now. It's just, we're already gonna end discussion. All right, so it's done deal. I've already explained to you the reason I put it on the agenda and I'm done with it.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Again, we all must really look at the code of conduct for mayors and council members. And I want to say that, uh, Mr. Lysa is an asset to our city council and community. He has good leadership backgrounds, great experience, and is very knowledgeable on a lot of municipality operations. I'm really surprised. That he reacted. To your comments the way he did. He's always been a respectful and professional man. So my recommendation is to stop all this nonsense because we're not getting anywheres. And we need to respect each other and work together. So. Let's move forward by being cautious on the tone and how we talk to people. The bottom line is we are all elected officials and professionals, so let's act like it. Thank you.
So in closing, I just want to say on my part this. If indeed that I was ever to use any profane language as Mr. Lysa did. I want to see the same treatment to me. That you have afforded Mr. Lysa. In the fair, equitable manner that you claim to use. On Mr. Lysa's conduct. If I ever, which God forbid that I don't. Because that is not the way I was raised. That is not the ethics and morals that I carry myself with. But if indeed it was to occur, then in the same respect that you have treated Mr. Lysa and comments you've made about him regarding this and not taking any kind of action to just make him apologize or say he's sorry or him himself stand up to the plate to say he's sorry for doing that. Not to me. Not to me, Mr. Lysa. I'm a big boy and I can handle it. I can handle it. It's not a problem for me.
Mayor, can I make a motion to call?
Wait a minute, to the two employees that you offended by utilizing that language is the one that you should you should apologize.
Can I make a motion to call the question?
Yes, go ahead. Let's just kill it at that. So let's.
Well, we've tried and you keep talking about it, so.
Continue. The fact is it's we're done, okay?
But I've made a motion to call.
No, there is no motion to this. There is no motion to this. This is an executive session that was done in open session. So there is no motion. It's dead. Let's just move forward. Let's get on to the next item on the agenda so we can all get home. Okay? All right. So item number seventeen. Uh, eighteen, excuse me, pursuant discussion, uh, discussion pursuant to five five one oh seven four personnel matters pertaining to city administrator Gilbert Morales. Deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear a complaint or charge against an employee. Um, so I have prepared. A um, a response to this. And. Again, as I've always told everyone here. Before you consider. Everything that occurs in this city that you're accusing me of doing that this uh, acts of creating a hostile work environment that I'm harassing employees. You need to look at both sides. You need to look at the employees as well in which this is occurring. And in the manner that caused that individual to escalate the situation. When a very simple question is asked, that individual takes the liberty of acting in a very disrespectful way to me. And so I'm going to read this on July twenty second, twenty twenty.
Mayor, before you continue, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna do the same thing we did. This is gonna be a third time.
Sir.
You get offended when you start something and you wanted something done. You need to understand that you have.
Be quiet.
You said there's no rules.
Quiet, sir. Quiet. Hey, please. Allow me to introduce what I need to introduce. Quit acting the way you are, sir. Dear citizens and council members of Balcony Heights. Before and after my election as mayor, I have faced various forms of organized opposition. It is clear to me that those organizing this opposition continue to employ tactics aimed at discouraging, entrapping and provoking me into unprofessional conduct, which I will not do. Since taking office, there has been a concentrated effort to attack, curse and disrespect the office of the mayor. It is apparent that certain employees and council members remain loyal to the previous administration and their only purpose is to create chaos. To direct the attention of voters away from the real financial issues. I have tried to remain positive, refraining from placing complaints in any negative incidents that I have been subjected to. But the time has come to expose these individuals and their under underhanded tactics. The citizens of Balcony Heights elected myself and two other council members because they were dissatisfied with the previous city administration. I recently discovered instances of public funds being misappropriated and hiring of employees including the city administrator without proper civil and criminal background checks. Extremely high department head salaries and eliminating oppressive ordinances that hinder small businesses. Furthermore, bypassing citizens to vote on a bond election that that was not conducted in a bond election by establishing an economic development corporation and taking out a five million dollar loan without proper consultation and due diligence has caused serious complications and budget shortfalls. It is estimated that this may result in property tax increases of over seventy cents in twenty twenty four. From day one, I've tried to pre-present innovative and relevant agenda items and items to improve the present conditions in our city. I have encountered resistance from the city administrator who made it clear that he would not answer to the mayor and that his loyalty and responsibility was solely to the city council. Recently, several incidents involving the city administrator's conduct have raised increasing concern. These innocent, these incidents collectively demonstrate a pattern of behavior that contradicts professionalism, respect and cooperation expected in his role. Specifically, I must address the following issues. Failed and refused to provide an orientation on city hall procedures, employees, offices or general knowledge of introduction to the city as newly elected officials. We never were given any kind of orientation, none of us. By you, Mr. Pedales, you refuse to do that. During a mayor administrator discussion on the phone that quickly quickly developed into a heated argument on the phone regarding freezing all police officer and employee hired until the newly elected administration and council had an opportunity to review the budget due to serious financial challenges. The administrator ignored the request and authorized hire of several officers and a maintenance man. Administrator also made what I consider a subliminal comment by mentioning he is a reserve peace officer who carries a favorite gun. A thirty eight nose revolver at all times, a statement that had no relevance to the conversation at the time. Twice refused to meet with mayor to discuss powers and duties of the mayor and city administrator roles and respective offices. Number three. Number four, failure to follow instructions. The administrator disregarded direct instructions from me to seize any public comments made by the former E D C director to the news media. These comments had the potential to disrupt our mall partnership. Furthermore, E D C director then made statements to the council in a letter without allowing other parties to be present in defense. Exaggerating tensions and creating unnecessary conflict with ongoing communications with W O T A partnership and creating and establishing mutual understanding of collaborative partnership. Five, opposition and fostering a hostile environment. The administrator reportedly treated a council member with disrespect and an attitude due to policy disagreements and salary discussion and comments made during the city council meeting. Such behavior not only undermines the integrity of our council proceedings, but also fosters a hostile environment toward the mayor and certain council members. It is the administrator's responsibility to ensure all employees conduct themselves professionally and respectfully, regardless of personal opinions or disagreements. Six, attendance at seminars. Concerns have been raised about the administrator's frequent attendance at seminars, both in state and out of state. Despite his term as a temporary seat administrator ending in September twenty twenty four. This raises questions about the necessity and the appropriateness of these trips, particularly considering the expenditure involved and issues that have been brought many times about we don't need to be spending that kind of money. Inappropriate language, the administrator cursed inappropriately in the presence of the mayor and other city employees during city business. When we're doing a tour to beautify the city and talk about looking at different properties in the community. Mr. Pedales continued to curse in my presence, in the presence of the code new code compliance officer. And I think Mr. Lotta was present as well. I took offense to that. I brought it to his attention and I told him not to ever do that again because it undermines my uh, role as a mayor. So. Okay, so the next thing is um, inappropriate language. So I covered that. Number eight, failure to respond promptly. The administrator failed to respond in a timely manner to a text message from me expressing concern about possible destruction of official city records at the E D C office. Nine, failure to send a representative. The administrator failed to send a representative of the city to investigate concerns raised by me on that specific day. Ten, disrespectful remarks. The administrator made a sarcastic statement in a disrespectful uh, respectful tone saying, Mayor, stop being paranoid. When I reported something that I thought was serious of destruction of of city property. Failure to comply with direct requests. The administrator failed to comply with my direct request to instruct the Director of Economic Development and Public Affairs to open the city office at WODA with police on scene to investigate my current concerns and observations. Twelve, refusal to assist. The administrator stated he would not lift the finger to help the mayor in any any way in any city business. Disrespectful conduct at meetings. Thirteen, the administrator questioned and disrespected me prior to a scheduled W O T A partnership meeting, making disparaging comments about my leadership abilities. He attempted to scold me for arranging and conducting the meeting. And when I referenced his tenure at Leon Valley, he became more upset, continuing to insult me in a disrespectful manner and ultimately walking off just minutes before other parties arrived, jeopardizing our mutual efforts to progress with the city and W O T A. Fourteen, lack of communication. The administrator failed to communicate with a real estate agent for two weeks and did not respond to the agent's attempts to reach him, potentially jeopardizing offers from two prospective buyers. To date, until today, we have received an update on the status, but my sentence reads, to date, we have not received a status on the Alt Ale property. So the real estate agent had to call me directly and tell me that Mr. Pedales had failed for two weeks to get back with him. Fifteen, misleading allegations. Recently, the city council received a letter from the administrator because someone had contacted his previous employer to inquire about his performance and any complaints lodged against him. In his letter, the administrator accused the action of creating a toxic toxic and hostile work environment. Implying a link between this action and subsequent executive session that we're having now. Addition that I have been placed on the agenda to discuss his performance. This accusation contradicts his own claims as he engages in the very behavior he is accusing others of. Sixteen, disrespectfully shook his finger in the face of the mayor after a council meeting in an attempt to try and publicly embarrass the mayor in the presence of employees regarding discussion of the meeting of the next day with the W A, W O T A. These issues are significant and demand immediate attention and resolution. Therefore, I have called for an executive session to discuss these matters in detail. Despite the current political climate, it is my responsibility under Texas local government code pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor to address this concern and bring it to the council. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Johnny Rodriguez, Mayor of Balcony Heights.
Hello? Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council.
You brought it to our attention. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a um, a motion to accept to close the meeting out. We have a second.
David, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would like before before we do that, I would like to see if we can make a motion just to table this indefinitely. These. This whole eighteen, agenda item eighteen. Well, it's it's.
Yeah, there's a motion in second.
Just motion saying just just so so we're aware, just if it comes up again, it's a mute and we just keep moving forward.
Well, it can be brought up in different forms and to the council, so it doesn't it's the purview of the individual that wants to put it on there. So.
Mr. Burton.
Go ahead, Mr. Burton. I'm sorry.
Um, again, I I said it earlier and and I have to say it again, you know, all of us here are just we're we're. We're um. How do I say this? We're lame ducks, you know, we're gonna sit here and bicker and bicker and bicker till a quarter till and 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 and, you know. There's there's some valid points. There's some invalid or whatever. And and he said, we said, he said, and stuff. Let's let's um. Let's let's find a way. You know, what was the guy in California Rodney? Uh, let's just all get along and 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 there's notice, there's no uh, action on this. And I I don't know if we can even put back teen in a Band-Aid on this whole thing. But uh, let's man, let's 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 just shake hands and and uh and and move forward.
Only one comment, though. Two seconds. And that is that this is all occurred in the last two months. Okay? I've been here two years and all of a sudden everything's bad. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Well, I have to ask, what are you what are you insinuating? Well, I have to ask, what, are you, are, what are you insinuating? Um, that, that I'm, that I'm bad? I mean, that's what I said earlier. Y'all want to say things without saying it. Just, just.
And you know why May twentieth? Because. Well, but I can, I can, I can, okay, so then why are you still talking?
We, we need a vote on that. We need a vote on the. Mayor, we need a vote on the, we need a vote on.
Over the vote, Mr. Burden? Mr. Burden, get your name.
Yeah.
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 Uh, Lassia.
Yes.
Okay, uh. Mr. Burden. Mr. John? Yes, yeah. Yes. All right.
Ten forty-five.